Would you join me, please, and the board in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Calanda, roll call, please.
Mr. Applebaum. Mrs. Castillo here. Mrs. Feldman.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mrs. Mogulman.
Here.
Dr. Sirtino.
Here.
Mr. Jacob.
Here. Thank you. Special recognitions, we have none, although I would like to recognize four or five scouts that we have here tonight, if they would stand up, please. I think there's... Thank you very much. They're here working on their citizenship and the community merit badge, and you picked a good night. I had some from my son's troop come, and they said it was the most boring meeting they'd ever been to. We're glad to have you here. Thank you. 4.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda, there are none. Although we are going to move what we had on the agenda, we're interested in being thoughtful to those who have come here and have something on their mind. We'd like to move the... Where we're going to talk about the...
11.02.
11.02, thank you. Where we're going to talk about the revised school starting and ending times, which both Mark Stockwell and Will Rosa will be making the presentation on that. Before we start, there's two things I'd like to say. Number one, there's two overriding things that this board cares about, among many things. Number one is the safety of our children, that they arrive, and we consider them our children, that they arrive at school safely. Second is that they're there on time so they can have the benefit of the full day of instruction. And then there are lots of ancillary things that add to that, but we feel very deeply about that. And I believe that this board will always try to make the very best decision that it can based on the information that it's given. And that's what we did last March or April, when we added additional time to the school day and also made the change in the schedule where we changed high school and middle school and some of the start and end times. I have to tell you just a brief story to illustrate a point. And many years ago, as a youth, I spent a lot of time on a dairy farm with cows and grew to hate them because they interrupted all of my fun time. They needed a lot of care, and they're not the most bright species on the planet. But they're a tender animal. And years later, I ended up with a very small farm and a few more cows again. And every time calves were born, my wife wanted to go out and pet them. And I had to remind her that that docile animal isn't very docile when it's trying to protect its young, its little calf. She was going to put herself in harm's way with an 800 or 900-pound mother. So I know that one of the reasons why you're here is because of the love that you have for your children. You care very much about their welfare, about their safety, and about their education. So we appreciate really all of the emails and phone calls and letters that we've received. I want to thank our board secretary, too, who's worked as feverishly as she could to make sure those things were to us in a timely manner so we could review them. And I appreciate, too, that our transportation department has had to work with a difficult logistics issue that goes back to those first two things I talked about, that we care very much about them being... The last thing I would want to see happen would be a bus driver who are... We have some of the best, but I don't want to put them in a situation where they think they have to be in a hurry, cut some corners, and then we have something awful happen. We just can't allow that. So with that being said, I would like to go ahead and ask Mark Stockwell and Will Rosa if they would come...
We should do the citizen statements first.
Oh, I think so.
Isn't that what we do?
Well, not this time. Go ahead.
Good evening again. I'd like to actually start this presentation with just a brief overview of our transportation operations, and then we can kind of move into some of the other discussion. But essentially, like most every other large school district, we operate a three-tier bus system. And essentially, that means that each morning, our bus drivers run a route to the first-tier schools. Then they drop kids off, pick another group up, drop them off the second tier, and do the same between the second and third-tier schools. What we know is that we need 45 minutes in between the tiers to feel confident or to be confident that we're going to have enough time to transport kids to and from school safely. And when you look at our current schedule, what you see is that we have 30 minutes between the first tier and the second-tier start times, and we have 40 minutes between the second and third tiers. So what that tells us is we just don't have enough time to get kids to and from school in a timely manner. So if you look at the screen, you can see this is actually one page of our routing software, and it's from September 9th. We just picked a day. And if you look at all those red places on the chart, those are all routes that were late either arriving at or departing from school. The yellow sections are routes that were actually later than they should be, but not considered extremely late. And the green ones were the ones that arrived on time. So if you look at that, you can see that we're still struggling with the transportation issues that we're facing now. And in our mind, that is just not acceptable to continue. Some of the things we've done since the start of school, which have made things better, but we haven't been able to resolve all of the problems. But we have... Will and his staff have made numerous adjustments to routes, shortening the long routes, you know, adding few kids to the short routes, trying to even things out so that, you know, it does make things a little better. He also actually kind of artificially changed... Didn't change start times in the morning, but basically what they did was they moved bus pickup times up without changing the start times. So on the first tier, he moved the start times up 10 minutes and basically are just delivering kids to school earlier than what they were. And what that does is it gives them, you know, a head start on the second tier. And, you know, that all flows through the second and third tiers. So that's been very helpful in the morning. It doesn't work in the afternoon because, you know, you can't pick the first tier up until they actually get released from school. So it doesn't work in the evenings. We actually have added additional routes using our spare buses and our sub-drivers. And actually, we have two mechanics driving buses in the afternoon. We have seven spares. Industry standards would suggest that we really probably needed 10 or 11, but we get by with seven. Unfortunately, right now, we're using five of those seven for additional routes. And this is just simply a short-term fix. It cannot continue because we will have breakdowns and we need to do scheduled maintenance on the vehicles throughout the year. So we can only do this for a short period of time. We also looked at adding 10 buses to our fleet. We currently have 115 buses. And we looked at adding 10 to see if that would help us. Unfortunately, it would add an additional $300,000 to $400,000 to our annual cost. And unfortunately, it doesn't really solve our problem because the 30-minute time span between the first and second tier just isn't enough, you know, even under ideal situations, to make it work well. We also looked at, you know, what we take a look at, well, what happens if we run a two-tier system? And essentially, if we do that, we basically would have to add 50 or 60 buses to our fleet and 50 or 60 drivers, and then we'd have to find somewhere to park them and maintain them. So that adds in the neighborhood of $300,000 to $400,000 in cost annually and just isn't feasibly possible. We also looked at changing bus stops, you know, making them farther away, fewer bus stops so that they could run the routes quicker. When we do that, we really do move into some safety issues with kids walking to bus stops. And what we found is that it really doesn't make enough of an efficiency improvement to really solve the problem we have right now. So basically, what I'm saying is we've tried a lot of things, and we just are really struggling trying to make this new schedule work. Now that we've kind of talked about our operations and the problems we're facing or the challenges we're facing, I kind of wanted to just give you a little background on how we got to where we are. If you recall, over the last couple of years, two of the major outcomes or goals of Project Parkway were lengthening the elementary school day by 20 minutes. And there was a desire to improve the middle school start times. If you go back to last year, our elementary schools, the instruction day was 6 hours and 35 minutes. And that was 15 to 20 minutes shorter than our middle schools and our high school days. And it was also the second shortest elementary school day in the county. Adding that 20 minutes to the school day actually added the equivalent of about 10 instructional days to the elementary school. So the decision was made last year to standardize our school days at all three levels at 6 hours and 55 minutes. So if you look at last year, you know, we basically had schools starting as early as 7:20 a.m. in the morning, and our last bell time on the third tier was 3:35. So if you take that span from the first start bell to the last end bell, it was 8 hours and 15 minutes. And then we added 20 minutes to the elementary school day. So you really need to add 20 minutes to that for comparison purposes. So we really would have had an 8 hour and 35-minute school day. Where we're at right now is, unfortunately, as we were talking through this with our community last year, there was a great deal of concern expressed by, at that time, it was elementary parents and staff because they were concerned about the... Some of the schedules we were looking at caused them to end as late as 4:05. And there was a great deal of concern expressed. And what eventually came out of that was the schedule we're on right now, which starts first... Earliest school start is 7:45, and the latest school end is 3:50. That's an 8 hour and 5 minute day. And the way they compressed that 8:35 down to 8 hours and 5 minutes is we compressed the transportation time between the tiers. And unfortunately, that's kind of where we're struggling a little bit now because we believe to feel confident in our transportation services, we need 8 hours and 25 minutes. And this next schedule kind of shows you how we got to that. If you look at the standard school day, 6 hours and 55 minutes, you add 45 minutes for the transportation between the first and second tiers and 45 minutes between the second and third tiers, you know, we get our 8 hours and 25 minutes. So as we look at the school day, you know, we could actually place that 8 hours and 25 minutes any point during the day. For example, if we started schools at 6 o'clock, they would end no earlier than 2:25. If we started them at 7 o'clock, that would move back to 3:25 for the ending times. 8 o'clock moves it back to 4:25, and 9 o'clock takes it to 5:25. So what we're recommending to resolve these issues is that we would have a school day footprint that would start at 7:35 and end at 4 o'clock. That's the 8 hour and 25-minute span that we believe is required to transport the kids. What that would involve is a Tier 1 start time of 7:35 and an end time of 2:30. Tier 2 would start at 8:20 and end at 3:15. Tier 3 would start at 9:05 and end at 4 p.m. And if you look at this chart, this is when we... Before we thought about making this recommendation, Will ran the proposed schedules through his routing software. And basically, what it generated is the routes, and it tells you whether or not you should be able to run those routes. And if you look at this now and think back to the prior one we looked at, all of these routes are green. So what we believe is that we can confidently say that short of a major traffic accident or weather condition, we should be able to deliver kids to and from school safely and on time if this new schedule is approved. This last chart actually shows a number of our neighboring districts and our current and proposed starting times for each tier. And if you look at the starting... These are all districts that have three-tier systems. And if you look at the Tier 1, the earliest starting time is 7:20 a.m., and the latest is 7:50. And then, which, you know, our current and proposed both fall in those ranges. And if you look at the... Go back to the Tier 3 dismissal times, you can see that the earliest dismissal time is 3:05 and the latest is 4:05. So our current and proposed ending times actually both fall within those ranges of our neighboring districts as well. So again, in summary, basically, what we're proposing is that we would move the first-tier schools' starting time up 10 minutes, move the second-tier starting time back 5 minutes, and move the Tier 3 starting times back 10 minutes. And that essentially provides us the 45 minutes in between tiers that we believe we need. And with that, I guess we're ready to take some questions.
Let me open it up to questions from the board.
We've heard some of the emails that some people were talking about distance and what about moving the distance from a half-mile, a mile, and so forth. Can you address that, please?
Good evening. Regarding the walk distances for students. Currently, our elementary schools have a walk distance of a half a mile. And anybody inside with a half a mile of elementary schools is in the walk area, walk zone. The exception to that would be if there's a hazardous zone. For instance, at Pirmont, there's no sidewalks, so we pick up students that live within a half a mile of the school. And again, for instance, at Pirmont, we have, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of 125 students within a half a mile, and they're picked up on five different buses on the way into school. At the middle school and the high school, the walk distance is one mile currently. And again, the hazardous zone is the same effect. We don't have students, for instance, crossing Woods Mill out front. Central Middle students do not cross here, even though they're right across the street. It's not safe, so we pick those students up. Other than that, I think at that level, within a mile, we're picking up 177 students right now currently at the middle and high school that are in a hazard zone within a mile. So the question, and I think I know where you're headed with that, if you eliminated or expanded the walk distance, how would that impact our capacity for buses? At the elementary school level, we do have somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,500 students in that zone, of which a good deal of them are in the hazardous walk area, which we are going to pick up, even if we extended the distance to one mile. If we had a bus or two and we could save some buses, it would be on a third-tier school, which are the elementary, and they would not help us on the first and second tier, which is really where we need the help. And if we did that at that middle and high school, I mean, we're already at a mile, so I'm not sure what we'd extend their walk distance to. So it doesn't... We've looked at the walk distances to schools, and it doesn't really give us much more capacity where we need it on the first and second tier.
And I would think that's something we'd have to give a lot of notice to people. What kind of impact would that have on the start and end times if we made a change?
It wouldn't... It really wouldn't help us. We're looking at building some capacity on the first and second tier, having availability of buses. And again, even on the best-case scenario hypothetical, if we were able to save one bus at each elementary school on the third tier or 14 buses, you know, they can't help us on the first and second tier. So really, it'd be a driver... You know, the bus would do a first and second tier, and then the third tier, it just wouldn't have anything to do. So it doesn't really impact on the first and second. If we had a middle or high school, if we had more students within that mile, it might have an impact. The other thing you have to consider is when we're picking up students inside, between a half a mile and a mile at the elementary school level with no appreciable costs, we're picking up on several buses in most cases on the way to school. And so if you start taking a few kids off one bus and another, you may not gain a bus doing it that way. We spread them out. They're not all on one bus.
I have two more questions, and then I'll let someone else talk. We've had also some emails regarding the number of high school students that are driving versus taking the bus. How would that impact the changes? And number two, someone had said something about buses from the south area having to come up north, and that also is delaying the times. Could you address those, too?
I mean, the south area and north, I did research that. We have one bus that is a first-tier bus from Pirmont, and it has a second tier going to Northeast Middle. And if you know where Pirmont is, it gets on 141. And I think it goes to either Ladue or Olive, and it starts picking up students, and it goes to Northeast Middle, and it's on time to Northeast Middle. And then from Northeast Middle, it would go to a third-tier school in the north. It doesn't return to the south. But that's the only exception that I would see from a north and south area. We do... We would have some buses central and north that are on the border. We do do some crossover in the areas, but not exclusively. But generally, we have all... We keep the buses in their area, and it works the best just for exactly that reason so we're not spending travel time. And the other question was the high school students driving. You know, we've kind of... There are high school students driving at south, probably is the most congested area, followed by the central campus here. I don't know if that would impact us if they were riding the bus versus driving. Is that...
I was just wondering if that was taken into consideration as to how the buses were filled? Were they being used to full extent and so forth?
You know, it's hard to predict which students ride. And just to give you an example, you know, we could go in a neighborhood, and, you know, there may only be one student at the stop, and the other four could be riding. We still have to go by the stop to pick the student up. So it doesn't save a lot of time unless we completely eliminate a stop. And that seems to be what we find in most cases. There's always a student or two at stops versus at elementary and middle school where there's more students at stops. And so short of eliminating the bus service, it'd be difficult to save the time and eliminate the routes because we're still going to the bus stops.
Thank you.
Mr. Major? For Will, and when I first came on the board, I had the privilege of touring your facility over there and seeing that scheduling software, which struck me as something that might have been useful back in my Navy career, but that's a story for another day. But I guess my question would go to back last year in the spring when we were putting together all these changes. One component of that was the... And a three-tier schedule is new for us, correct?
We have a multi-tier schedule, I guess is the best way to put it. And I think we, at some point, Parkway probably started with a three-tier. And if you looked at all of our starting times last year, in reality, we had... I think we have seven different starting times. So we're probably... We're not a three-tier, and we've evolved where we are, where we were last year, almost to a seven-tier.
Okay. So that was... But with the change in the length of the school day for the elementary, that brought a three-tier more into the realm of possibility. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the thinking that went into that, as Mark showed, the 30-minute and 40-minute gaps in Tier 1 and Tier 2, did that play out on the software but not on the street? Is that why we're here?
It will show a closer approximation on the software, but it doesn't factor in, you know, some of the traffic concerns. And we do run all of the routes before school starts. In fact, we've been running them since last spring. And we do run them during the same time approximately that the route would run. But we can't... What is hard to estimate is parent traffic, car traffic, and just general to-and-from work traffic during a school year. It's quite a bit different than during the summer and really during late spring when we started finishing some of these routes and put them together.
I certainly noticed this year that I thought the start-of-the-school-year run from my house to Clayton was dramatically tougher than it had been in previous years. And I don't know if that's strictly a function of Parkway's transportation woes, if there's some other gremlin in the mix here. But as far as what we voted on last year.
I think last year...
At the time, you felt that was a viable and doable schedule?
I think ideally, the doable schedule is 45 minutes. And I think we, as we got input from the community, we started compressing, and we were hopeful that, particularly in the afternoon. In the morning, we can, as Mark had mentioned, we artificially start earlier, get to high school earlier, and get the kids basically to school on time. In the afternoon, we didn't have as many gains. We were trying to recombine routes. We were trying to eliminate some stops at the high school level, which we are constantly doing, where students are not riding. And we do find those, and as we eliminate them, we gain some time to make some of those things work. The other thing is we changed our loading pattern from a static loading, is what we basically have always done, to a dynamic for most of the middle schools, where the buses roll in, they get loaded, and they leave versus the buses all there at the same time and leaving. And so we've really transitioned to that this year. And most of the middle schools have done an excellent job doing that, but it's still not enough time.
Okay. Well, if we pressed you too hard last year, then that's on us, too. So, thank you.
So currently, right now, you have... So you have seven spares, and you're utilizing five to try to make do in the interim? And you're still, even with the shifting of the pickup times and all that, you're still running into significant late times?
Currently?
Yeah.
Yes. Less in the morning because, again, we're finding ways to arrive earlier at high schools, primarily our first-tier schools. And in the afternoon, again, as Mark had mentioned, we don't have that opportunity. You know, we start when we start, and then it's a ripple effect. If we're not running on time into the second tier, then it goes into the third tier, and then we're behind schedule, even with the spares we put in the afternoon primarily and the extra drivers.
And right now, you only have two spares?
Correct. Two spares is not enough.
Using up all your sub-drivers?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify what the current situation was.
Will, thank you for what you've done. I know it hasn't been... It's been less than ideal, and I know it's been very stressful for you and very stressful for many of your drivers whose aim is to get kids to school safely in a timely fashion. And we all want that, as Chris said already. As Bruce mentioned, last year, we had multiple start times. And I understand the most efficient way to do the tier system is have three tiers that all start at the same time and end at the same time. I'm wondering if we can adjust any of the individual schools if need be. I mean, if it works at a school now, do we have to change it? You know what I'm saying? Even...
It's tough to answer because it depends on which school services the next school, which services the next school.
Right.
And that's where it gets a little tricky.
So I guess my... Let me ask my question a little better. Is there any school through all three tiers that all the buses are running on time?
The first tier are all running on time.
I'm talking about the first tier, the second tier, the third tier, the routes of the drivers.
I wouldn't say they're 100% on time at all. I mean, I think it's pretty systemic across all the routes. I wouldn't... I don't feel that confident that we have enough time, really. Under ideal circumstances, we're getting pretty close to being on time.
Right.
I don't know that we're perfectly, you know, ahead of the schedule where we should be on all the tiers. I mean, we're close. I can think of some schools that, you know, we're pretty close on most days, but not every day in the morning.
Also, going back to... Will said we had seven tiers last year.
Right.
But if you remember, it took us 8 hours and 15 minutes to run those seven tiers. And that was before we added 20 minutes to the elementary school day. So even trying to do that again, we'd be at 8:35, not 8:25 is what we're trying to get to. So if... From what I understand, talking to Will, it wouldn't help.
I just wanted to be sure that it wasn't working some... That it was failing everywhere. That's what I'm trying to...
I understand. Some areas are better than others, but overall, I mean, it's really just... It's very tight schedule. And the other factors, we have seven buses in there that, you know, we have to pull back out because we're not being very efficient with them. We're just kind of, you know, identifying the hotspots. And the mechanics need to get back to work, and the sub-drivers are not going to... You know, we can't have them just driving a single-tier route all year. It's not very efficient.
And another concern I have is, do we have two elementary schools that are in Tier 1? Four, thank you. That is a big concern to me, to all of us. So I don't know if you've run any scenarios?
It's hard to change them midstream because they do balance out the tiers.
I get you.
I think it was... It's hard to go back and take them off after we've put them on there and establish a routing solution. It would make some significant... It would make some significant changes if we tried to do that in terms of buses again because if, if they're not on their first tier, then they're not taking care of the second tier and the third tier.
Right. Even if you leave those four schools the same as they are now, we're still gonna run into trouble down the road?
In terms of the next tier schools?
The next tier schools. That's-
You know, I'd have to look at where each, each of them goes individually. I know Hannah Woods is, is a challenge because they're on the same tier as South and it's-
Would that, would that help that traffic situation a little bit though if we-
It could if they're offset a little bit. The problem is if they go much later, then it'll have a ripple to the next two or three.
I bet, I understand.
And that's, and we've been looking at that. How can we not affect, you know, we've looked at a lot of individual schools as you had suggested also and said, what, what if, and what if? And what we find is we keep bumping into a problem at the second and the third tier with that school and particularly with, on the first tier. Now, we don't arrive, none of the four elementary schools on the first tier, we, we don't have those schools arriving at 7:15.
Yeah.
They're on a-
You can't.
A very tight 10-minute window.
Right.
Which is as skinny as we can get for an arrival versus a high school that might arrive earlier to get to the next tier. So we've already taken the elementary schools and tiered them with something that they can get to the next tier on time without getting to school too early and that seems to work so far.
Well, I really, I don't know. I feel strongly that's something we need to look at.
Let me just suggest to you, if you could, hold your applause so we can get through this as quickly as possible. I appreciate, we, we all love applause, but we, we need to keep it to a minimum. So, thank you.
Was there a dry run that had taken place prior to actually running these routes, routes so that you could kind of get an idea, excuse me, of how long it was going to take between the times?
We do dry run the routes.
What was the result of that?
It's varied. We dry run and we have to recombine them and then we put them together. The difference is when we're dry running, we're not doing with students and parent traffic and, and that is a huge difference here at the Central Campus and at South. I mean, we, we've lost, for instance, out of Hannah, as much as 15 minutes getting out of there to the next school. And it's hard to predict exactly how that's gonna work out, not to mention some of the other areas that are, Big Ben has been particularly slow. The later start time, although we did run it during later start times to mirror what it might look like, some of the routes are troublesome. Highway 270 is not, not real smooth flowing to Northeast Middle, for example. And we didn't encounter as much delay when we did our dry runs as we are now during school.
Sam, do you have some questions?
I was just wondering, what is the latest arrival under the 7:45 schedule for high schools?
The latest arrival?
Right, at schools. Do you have a, I mean, is it going to be that much difference in terms of the 7:35 start versus the 7:45 in terms of when most of the buses arrive to the school, to the high schools?
I'd have to look at them, but we have several buses at each high school that arrive between 7:15 and 7:25. So if school starts at 7:35, do we need to arrive any earlier or no? I guess, I see, right. I don't know that it makes a lot of changes to the pickup time because under the proposal, we would still be arriving at, say, 7:25, a 10-minute or even a 15-minute window. And then we're gaining time in between moving the middle schools back so we have more time to get, to arrive there next. So I don't believe you would see substantial changes backwards.
So then, what is the earliest time that a bus will pick up students on the 7:25 or 7:35 schedule? How early would students have to be at bus stops compared to the 7:45?
Well, I, I don't know that that would change substantially again because we're-
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty close to where we're at now. I wouldn't say it's exact because we're, you know, we, we're moving things around, but it's, it's pretty close. And, and some of the elementary schools too, I looked at on a proposal, what happens to Oakbrook? And in fact, I checked a route for a young lady here at Parkway and her pickup time is exactly the same as her pickup time under the current system. So it didn't change at all.
Okay, so it's not a big difference then?
No.
If at all? Okay.
Sam, you asked one of my questions. So in other words, the kids that ride the bus to the first-tier schools, just to repeat what you just said, their pickup time at their bus stop would not change significantly from what it is right now? Is that what you just said?
Correct. Correct. For the ones that are arriving between 7:15 and 7:25, and I don't know the exact number, but it's, it's a pretty big number, their stop time would be approximately the same. The ones that are arriving at 7:30, you know, if we want a 10-minute window prior to school on the high school or even 15 minutes, then that would be a five-minute change for those students.
So really it's not a 10-minute change that the kids would have to get to the bus stop 10 minutes earlier. I think when people think they hear the start time's gonna be earlier, they're automatically assuming that that's gonna move their bus time earlier and that's really not the case.
Not, not, not across the board. There are some cases where we're not arriving until 7:35.
Right. And I think those kids would probably appreciate having that little window of time-
Right.
-at school if they need to stop by a teacher's office or whatever. From what I understand from the, the emails and the phone calls we've gotten, we've heard so much from first-tier students, parents and teachers, and they're, they're saying we don't see the problem. And I think that there's so many of them that are affected and yet they're not experiencing the problem. So what would be a good answer for us to give these families?
Well, the first tier, I don't know if that's as problematic because we are, you know, if you enjoy, my own children are getting picked up at 7:07 to get to school at, you know, 7:25. We're picking up the first-tier students early and they're getting to school on time. I don't, I, I think we're almost 100% on time in the first tier because we can be.
Right.
We can keep moving the time back.
I guess the point that I'm making is, is the people who are, who are affected by first-tier service don't understand the impact that this has on the second-tier and third-tier students, on their learning, on arrival at class in the midst of first period, on, on the safety of, the, the stress to the drivers of getting to where they need to be because I know the drivers are very concerned about getting the kids to school on time. But also the disruption that it causes within a school. Once a teacher has started a class, if, if a bus is coming 10 to 15 minutes late, that means the student potentially missed the first five or six minutes of class and that means potentially a teacher would have to go back over what they covered to catch the student up who, due to no fault of their own, is arriving late in the classroom.
I mean, I would agree and I know from the, some of the routes I worked on, South Middle's a good example. We had a route arriving late every morning and it took us six or seven tries until finally we had to split the route up and add a bus because it just could not get there on time. So you, I, I guess you could argue it's just one bus, but there's 40 kids in the bus and they're not getting to school on time and there's-
Right. And that, and that has a ripple effect of how many kids it affects in the classroom. Okay. And then on the, on the other end of that, on the pickup time, the buses that are dropping off the first and second-tier kids that are having trouble getting to school to be in position by the, by the time the bell rings.
Right.
How are we handling things for those children that are much delayed in boarding a bus because their bus can't arrive on time?
In the afternoon or, well, we are using a dynamic loading pattern versus static. Kids are waiting on buses last year and every year before, buses waited on kids. So we have changed our, the way we operated. All the middle schools have been very, they've really done a great job of adapting to the new system, but it is, it is an effort on their part and it does involve safety. We have buses pulling off individually because they need to leave to get to the next tier and we are not arriving at the middle schools really in a reasonable time, sometimes as late as 20 minutes after their bell time.
Right.
And so that makes them that much later for the third tier, which is mostly elementary schools, arriving later there.
I don't know if you two are the right people to answer my next question, which is maybe Desi or Bonnie, you guys could chime in. What happens to those kids that are waiting for their bus at 3:50 and the bus isn't here? What do they do? Not to put you on the spot or anything.
Well, it's supervision. All children are supervised at the elementary level at all times and I would say that would be true for the middle school also. So therefore, we have staff and administration supervising those students until the buses arrive.
All right. And is that staff, probably mostly teachers?
Yes.
That-
Classroom teachers and others too because of, then when it's time to dismiss, they have to be escorted to their buses.
Okay. Once again, I don't know if either one of you have the answer to this, but how's this gonna affect our transfer students' schedules? Their pickup times and their drop-off times?
Probably shouldn't have a huge impact. I did contact Vic and let them know that we were considering a change and they didn't seem to think it would be that big of a deal for them, but at the same time, it could be, you know, if I ever, it could potentially be a 10-minute or earlier pickup, but I, I think, well, I probably am not the best one to answer because I would expect that most of those probably get here a little earlier, but I, I'm not the person probably to.
Mm-hmm. Desi? I put Bonnie on the spot, now I can put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. The, with the Vic students, you know, I know last year when we were going through the change, because they're, they're not run by the same system, they have, and they have multiple schools they're going to, they have a lot more flexibility. So they were kind of saying at the beginning when we were making changes, just tell us what your final results are and we'll get the buses there. But typically, the Vic students do arrive early and I know there are a lot of opportunities in, in typical schools to allow time for breakfast. So there is, you know, a good 10 to 15-minute window before school starts when our Vic students arrive and sometimes earlier than that, depending on the school and what their next route is too and which, which school they may be going to. But I, I think ultimately it comes down to a kid could experience a five to 10-minute earlier pickup time for Vic as well.
And while you're standing there, something just occurred to me that I hadn't written down and that is when we were doing our Project Parkway study, I think you and maybe Dr. Bogus were involved with those studies. And I think we did a, a study of sunrise and sunset times. I know a lot of parents are concerned that their younger children are gonna be either waiting for the bus in the dark or coming home from the bus in the dark on the third tier. And I know that we looked at that and is there gonna be a major shift of who's waiting in the dark? Are people who never waited in the dark before now gonna be forced to wait in the dark? I probably don't have those numbers in front of you.
No, I don't have the numbers in front of me.
I probably should've thought to ask you that before.
But I, I know when we brought the, the 7:45 to, and, and all the way to 4:05 proposal, we were within the, the timeframe went through the darkest days in December to look at that. But I, I'm gonna guess that just the earliest dark times when we've had Vic students, I mean, I can pretty much guarantee that we had some dark students.
Right.
Typically, the difference on this one would be, you know, we, we had mostly middle schools students last year that would've been waiting for the bus in the early-
Yeah, I know my kids spent, each spent three years waiting in the dark in the winter. I mean, you know, it's just, if your child rides the bus and school starts early, it's dark in the winter.
Yeah, and the school last year was a 7:20 start.
Right.
So it was even more 15 minutes earlier than we're talking about tonight.
All right. And when we looked at possible solutions, I know we talked about the potential of adding more buses. You said if we, if we leased back the 10 buses that we just turned over, then that would really just be a Band-Aid. It wouldn't be nearly enough buses to fix the problem and it would cost us between $300 and $400,000. So my question is, looking towards the future, if we would decide we wanted to make an investment to be a two-tier system, could you give me on an individual basis about how much you pay for a bus? How much it costs in salary, maintenance and benefits for a driver to drive that bus? So I have some idea of the magnitude of the, of the cost of all this?
Forty, it, it's approximately $41,000 in that range for a bus driver, maintenance, fuel, benefits.
Okay.
And that's calculated at a $70,000 bus.
Mm-hmm.
Would trade in, drive in 12,500 miles.
And how long do we keep the buses?
For 10 years.
Okay.
Driving 12,000 on average, 500 miles a year using current fuel figures. It, it, it's a little bit of a vary, but that, that's pretty close.
So that's how you guys came up?
And it's probably on the low side.
You came up with that three to four million dollar figure? And then that leads us to the bus yard?
Right.
The lack of space for additional buses on the bus yard?
Parking, the additional 10 buses was a little bit of a, would be a little bit of a challenge to find a place to park.
So we're full?
We are full.
We're at capacity, okay.
Right.
One of, one of the parents that emailed me had a point and, and I kind of, you know, thought she might have a really good point and that is that the Central Area Campus right here between the middle school and the high school, the traffic ties up terribly. And I know last year when the middle school kids got out at 2:20 or whatever it was, Officer Don would be out there directing traffic because there's no traffic light. But I've been stuck in the traffic over here and do we have, do we have an officer on duty that's directing traffic on the street to make us flow better?
We, we do, but when, when we do, the difference is last year we had all our buses there at first tier. So Central Middle, whether 16 or 17 buses all lined up, they all have, they all were loaded and then as they started rolling, Officer Don, I think he's here tonight.
Yeah, I know he is.
He would, he would stand down there. So he, when we're just loading two or three or four at a time and then letting them roll, we don't have that opportunity, although I know he gets down there when he can even now to try and help because it is bad and it's a little bit worse than last year.
And, and over here, we have such a combination of students, teachers and buses all trying to get out of that one lane all at the same time. I'm just wondering, and we're, obviously we can't reconfigure the parking lot at this particular moment, but I'm wondering if we've got police out there directing traffic, maybe stopping traffic outside of the lights, if that would at least help it, help the parking lot clear a little faster so the buses could get on their way?
It, it does help, but he's also helping during the loading or process during the afternoon. On the 45-40 plan, the goal is again to have, you know, 95 or all the buses there before they dismiss. That's what, on our fleet schedule, that is what we're looking at. And so when they dismiss, they're all loaded and we're getting back to a similar loading pattern as we've had in the past.
All right. I know, I know I'm taking a lot of time and I apologize. I just think these are important questions that people really need to hear the answers to. I have two more questions. One is, we have not had significantly bad weather yet. We've had a couple of rainy days. So on, on a day, on a regular day and then you compare it to a rainy day, how many extra minutes do you, can you average that that would add to a bus run?
Yeah.
I'm not talking about a sprinkle. I'm talking about a, a bad rainy day.
Boy, that, that's hard. I mean, it's hard to estimate. It just depends on the conditions. I mean, everybody drives slower, it always seems there's more accidents. It, it slows things down. The visibility is not, I mean, we just have to be more cautious. It does slow some things down.
So last year when we had 45 minutes between routes, I feel like I'm a lawyer asking questions of a witness, I'm sorry, but did we, we must've had late buses arrive on rainy days even though we have the 45 minutes?
We, we will have late buses even at 45 minutes.
Right. Okay.
We will have a lot less, it'll be the exception, not the rule. And right now, on our current plan, those are, seem to be becoming the norm instead of the exception.
Right. Okay. And my very last question is, you've said that it's an industry standard to have 45 minutes between runs. Is it common for people to step outside of the industry standard?
I mean, sure. It depends. I would say out in Winsfield, for example, their, you know, their, their population, their density is different. Their routes are 55 minutes. And maybe down in Melville or some other areas where there's less congestion, for one, less traffic in the route. It's a smaller area, you know, we have 69 square miles, for example. We cover a bigger area and, and the type of bus we use is a factor, but 45 is pretty common. You know, I guess you could do 40 or 42 or 43.
Right.
You'll see a whole range of, of, of times. You know, I guess you could do 40 or 42 or 43, you'll see a whole range of, of times.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Will, I just have a question for you. If most of the Tier 1 students are there early, is, is there an op, option or an opportunity that we might be able to say that Tier 1 could start at 7:40 instead of 7:35? Would that still give you time to get the Tier 2 people?
If Tier 1, excuse, if Tier 1 starts at 7.
They're getting there early already, you mean?
Yeah, if they're getting, you're getting them there early already, could, could we, if we started at 7:40 instead of 7:35, would that?
I mean, I would look at it, that would be a possibility, of course. It would be in the, if they start at 7:40, um... It still goes to 35 minutes, I don't know that that would, it would, in the morning, I mean, we can, a little, we have more leeway in the afternoon, I don't know that that would, you're looking at 35 minutes versus 30, and I don't know that that would solve much on the second tier.
Well, the, the other ones would change.
Oh, if the other ones changed?
So you'd, you'd have 40 instead of 45 for that Tier 2?
We have talked about the possibilities there, and I mean, you know, you know, if we're directed to do that, we can do that. What, what we need to say, though, is, is that we, you know, to feel confident that we're going to transport kids to and from school safely and timely, you know, the 45 is really what's required. Again, we'll, you know, we tried to make the 30 work, and unfortunately, it didn't.
Well, we don't want you to try to make it work, we want it to work.
And, and if you want us to say absolutely what we believe we need, it's, it's 45.
There would still pose problems. Right? I mean, the five minutes might not have an impact in the morning, because it's just five minutes, minutes less that the kids are, are waiting around for school to start, but in the afternoon, that would...
It would not.
The five minutes would push into the other tiers anyway, so.
It wouldn't, if you're just looking at 35 minutes on the first and second tier in the afternoon, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have an impact, we're consistently more than 10 minutes in most of the elementary schools.
And if you had the 45 minutes, would you look to go back to dynamic or to static rather than dynamic?
Our goal on the 45 is to, yes, to have all the buses, similar to how, how we have done it in the past, to have them in there ahead of time, ahead of the bell time, and so kids could load on the second and, and really the third tier too, the elementary students, so they're not waiting on the buses.
Dee, do you have an additional question?
So, if, if we wanted to, let's say we wanted to a Band-Aid approach, and we want to spend $400,000, and we want to buy, what'd you say, 10 buses? Your opinion? Lease, whatever, lease them for a year, whatever. Your opinion is, that is not going to solve this problem, we're still going to be backed up, it's not going to fix it?
Buy 10 buses without changing times, that way?
Well, or to spend the $400,000, the, what would it cost to fix it?
We need a big calculator. I, I don't know, I think the time is really the, I mean, I don't know if there's a substitute for the time, really, with the buses, I mean, I could do some math, but it, it's almost, what we're talking about is almost getting to a two-tier, we're so tied into 30 minutes.
Right.
I, I don't know if that makes...
In a perfect world, I think we would all like that, but...
Right. I don't know if it makes sense, and then the parking and all the other issues that we, you know, really, we don't, don't have the ability.
Yes, I, I know. I don't know. Okay. Thank you, I just wanted that clarified.
Are there any further questions? Helen?
Will and Mark, again, I, I would like to thank you also for all the hard work and everything that you've done, and unfortunately, like Chris said, sometimes things work and sometimes they don't. And as an institution, an educational institution, our first commitment is to the safety and education of our children. But I would like to address a couple of the emails that we received, and I'd just like you to, if possible, address the statements in those related to the time factor of schedules already set, hardship on getting daycare and so forth, and also the after-school or before-school activities.
I mean, they certainly have an impact on all of those things, and I, and I recognize that. I know some families, and I, I've received similar emails from, from parents that are scrambling, and I understand that. In the same sense, we have a lot of kids that aren't arriving at school when they need to, and so, I mean, I, I guess you have to weigh the two and, and make some choices, because I, you know, the 45 minutes gets all the students to school on time in the morning and the afternoon, and that's really what we're trying to accomplish with the proposed bell times.
And, and one thing, I know this doesn't, I mean, we, we truly understand the, the challenges this, this causes for our parents, but what we're finding now, if, on that third tier that would be ending late, you know, the buses, the kids that are riding the buses aren't getting home probably any earlier than what they're probably going to get home with the change, because the buses aren't getting there when school gets out. So the only way they're getting home earlier now is if their parents are picking them up. So it, it wouldn't have a dramatic change in when the buses get home in the evenings. But, but again, we do totally understand how parents feel, and trust me, this is the last thing in the world we'd love to be, we want to be up here recommending to you.
Do you have another question?
I'm sorry.
All right.
10 minutes on paper doesn't look like much, but I think it, it is a lot in reality, and not only does it affect our students and our parents, but our teachers, and we're aware of that, and we, we all understand that challenge that they're going to have if this passes, so I just wanted to recognize that. I also think we need to thank Dr. Marty for stepping in. We, we feel bad that, that this was your first big challenge, but we appreciate all the hard work you've done on this too. And he did not come in with an agenda to change our school start time, believe me, that was not what, what this was about, so we, we thank you for your hard work.
If I could just respond, I want to thank the staff here, who's done a really fine job. We, we since day one have been working to try to make this work, we truly have, you've heard that from a lot of people. Will has been almost daily coming with ideas. I think my responsibility is to ensure that, we've talked about it, you've talked about it, that students are safe, but in the new schedule, the new plan, we want to maintain the integrity of our, our schedule, and, and when we have students arriving late, that's not, that's not appropriate, it's not acceptable in my mind that we're not giving the students a full instructional day, and that's not happening at the middle school, and in some cases, elementary school. So I think it's our responsibility, certainly my responsibility, Superintendent, to not allow that to continue, if we can correct it, and that's why we're here tonight to, to make that recommendation to you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate that report to the board, appreciate all your questions, and we'd like to move to this portion of the meeting where we recognize citizens and their citizen statements, but before we do that, I'd like to just give you a few ground rules so that we can move through this as quickly as possible. We'd like this to be a safe and orderly meeting, and I know it will be. Everyone here, we'd ask you to, to conduct yourself so that your kids will be proud of you. We, we really cannot have disruptive conduct, and I don't expect there'll be any of that, but I'm just letting you know. There will be a time limit of two minutes, since we have 38 people that want to say something, so that can go for a while. If there's any chance that someone can represent you, if they have a similar view, then you might turn that time over to them, but we're not obviously going to force anybody to do that, but if that's, can work for you, that would be great. And Beth will be keeping, she'll be my timekeeper here, so when you get to two minutes, she'll raise her hand, and that would be the signal to, to finish your comments.
Mr. President?
Yes?
If I might suggest, we try to do a little dynamic versus static loading at the podium, maybe if you call in groups of four or five, and that way we can have people standing by.
There's a place to sit right behind Desi Kershaw, right there on the front row, the handsome bald man. So we will call for four, I will do that, thank you very much. No shouting, talking loudly during the meeting, so we can hear those that have something to share with us. No foul or inappropriate language, I can't imagine that would, um, and if you would limit as much as you possibly can entering the board meeting room, just so everybody can do their thing. And I'd like to remind you, we do have Chesterfield Police here tonight. Don't, don't stun me, bro. No, don't. All right. All right, thank you. When you come to the podium, if you would please state your name and your address, so I can make sure I've got the right address here, because we would like to get a response back to you, and then limit your comments to two minutes or less if you can. So the first four that I would like to ask to come forward would be Lee Remy, Alex Pinder, Amy Shapiro, and Daniel Sauerwein, and we'll begin with, with Lee. Yeah, say, say your name and address, please.
My name is Lee Remy. My name's Lee Remy, I live at 15415 Clover Ridge Drive. Before I begin, I actually, I was told I couldn't use the projector today, and I have some handouts for you guys, so do you mind if I come distribute those? Okay, so, good evening, I'm Lee, I'm a senior at Parkway Central High School, and rather than discussing why we shouldn't push the times back, which is why most of my peers are here today, I actually have a new proposal that my peers and I think could be feasible. So I propose that we switch tiers. So the middle school and the high school would switch tiers, and the middle school would be on the first tier, the high school would be on the second tier. The elementary school would stay on the third tier. What would happen is, the first tier, the middle schools, we would push them five minutes forward to start at 7:30, and they would end around 2:30 or 2:35, whatever, I mean, these days should stay six hours and 55 minutes, that's how they're set up. Tier two, the high schools, would actually start at 8:15 and go until 3:10. This would give kids the amount of time that they need to come to school and get work done, do labs, go to practices, all the different activities that they participate in. And then Tier three, the elementary schools, we would actually keep from 9:05 to 4 o'clock, like the original, like your plan states. The reason that we chose these times is because Parkway wants buses to have 45 minutes between every tier to go pick up kids, take them to school, and if you look between, in the mornings, between the middle school and the high school, buses have 50 minutes to travel, and then between the high school and the elementary school, buses also have 50 minutes to travel. So that's five extra minutes, which earlier you guys were talking about extreme weather conditions, that might help a little bit. Then in the afternoon, the buses between the middle schools and the high schools also have 50 minutes, and then the buses between the high schools and the elementary schools also have 50 minutes, so, sort of plan. Thank you for your time.
Again, we love applause, but it's going to lengthen this, and I know you're sitting for quite a while, so if you would keep that. And we do have a long agenda afterwards that I know most of you will stay for. Alex, if you would come next, please, and then Amy, you can come right up after him.
I'm Alex Pinder, I live at 14866 Greenleaf Valley Drive. I'm a senior at Parkway Central High School, and I am here on behalf of 538 students from Parkway Central High School who have signed this petition to try and limit, or to move the high school to the second-tier bus system. According to research done by the Sleep Foundation, a nationally recognized organization, adolescents that are in high school need around nine and a quarter hours of sleep per night. However, these students are not able to enter the proper cycles of sleep until around 10 or 11 at night, meaning they simply cannot fall asleep due to how their bodies work. The study also shows that students in middle school are able to achieve those proper cycles of sleep between an hour and two hours earlier than those students in high school, meaning that middle schoolers would be able to adjust to waking up earlier. Also, in a Rhode Island high school study, it has proven that moving the start of the school day later a half hour decreases the percentage of students that guess, that get less than seven hours of sleep per night from 33.8% to a minor 7%. The study also showed that the percentage of teens getting eight hours or more went up from 16.4% to 54.7%. Not only are the students getting more sleep, but the study shows that more sleep leads to reduced absences and tardies, less violence at lunch and between classes, and also leads to decreases in depression. However, getting less than seven hours of sleep a night can lead to increased risk of heart disease, depression, suicide, as well as reduce the risks of fall asleep car crashes. A fellow student of mine, Andrew Sherman, experienced this firsthand, falling asleep at the wheel after, and suffering a near fatal car accident due to his staying up too late in order to finish an essay. Now, I quote the Parkway School District mission statement, "To ensure all students are capable, curious, and confident learners." How can you expect students to accomplish this when they're sleeping in class because they couldn't get enough sleep the night before? The goals of Parkway go on to say, "To support health and well-being of all students." How can you say that you're supporting health and well-being when you're ignoring the facts and studies done about how high school students need the most sleep, and you're going to reduce the amount of sleep the high school are able to get?
Thank you, Alex.
Hello, my name is Amy Shapiro, and I live at 12762 Hezel Lane, H-E-Z-E-L Lane, Creep Court, Missouri. So I'm going to talk about the special ed students. First of all, I go to Parkway Central, and I'm a senior, and I work very closely with the special education students at my school, because I want to be a special ed teacher when I grow up, and what I've learned through working with them is if you change things regularly with them, or like, change a time that they already get, got used to, they, it like messes them up, and it takes a really long time for the parents to explain to them that, you know, that this time has changed, you got to get up at this time instead of whatever other time. And adjusting to a brand-new system and schedule for them is very complicated, because it takes a lot more to progress that for them. And for some parents to change their schedules around to help them participate, like, in helping their students, helping their children understand, and people with like cerebral palsy and other disabilities, they have wheelchairs and walkers that they have to get on the bus, and I understand that each special education bus, I guess that's what you call it, goes like directly to their house to make it easier for them, so, like, to figure out the time for them, it would be complicated, because they'd take longer to get on the bus, and as for me, I'm a special education student, I have ADHD, I'm open about it, and I need a lot of help in the mornings, because it takes me forever to understand something, and to ask a teacher to get there, like, at, like, I walk in right when my math teacher does at 7 o'clock, to get help with math. To ask her to get there earlier, I feel that's a sin, because I know that she has, you know, who knows if she has kids to drop off in the morning, and the babysitter isn't awake yet, or daycare isn't open, you know, you never know. So, um, just, I guess, keep that in mind, and to push the back, the school time back would, I think, mess with a lot of, okay, I'm done, thank you.
Hello, before I begin, I'd like to just say thank you for this opportunity to share some information with you, and I also have some copies of the presentation I'll be giving here for you all. I'm a couple copies short, I apologize, but I think it'll be helpful.
And remember to say your name and address.
Hello, my name is Daniel Sauerwein, I am from Parkway Central High School, and I live at 1932 Preston Ridge Drive. Now, what I'll be doing here is talking about some of the biological reasons why it is infeasible to have high school students start earlier. Mainly, we got to talk about some of the case studies, as Alex Pinder brought up earlier in his speech, he basically talked about how the National Sleep Foundation, along with the American Board of Sleep Medicine, found in 80 different case studies nationwide, that basically, high school students, they go through a period of adolescence where they secrete hormones that force them to stay up later at night and sleep later in the morning. So in order to reach optimal learning potential, these students need to have starting school times that would better accommodate their biological clocks. So let's talk about some of the benefits of this. In the studies I mentioned, they stated that basically there are multiple benefits to this, to starting times later, and this case study which was cited, basically, the example was, there were schools that had a starting time of 7:30, they moved that 7:30 starting time to 8 o'clock, and there was drastic changes, some of them included, the less likelihood of experiencing depressed moods, reduced likelihood for tardiness, reduced absenteeism, better grades, and reduced, reduced risk of fall asleep crashes, and reduced risk of metabolic and nutritional deficits associated with obesity. So basically, as you can see, there are multiple benefits for negating this proposal, simply because high schoolers, their bodies are different, they need special circumstances in order to reach their full potential. Now, one of the biggest concerns is the fall asleep car, car crashes that I basically referenced there, and when you started this session, would you like me to?
Three times, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We appreciate that from the four of you, you will receive a response. The next four, if they would come up, please, James Wang, Marcy Blatt, Jen Kristofferson, and Bridget Dons. And we'll start with you, James.
It's not very tight. Hi, I'm James Wang, I'm a senior at Parkway West High School, and my address is 15568 Paracel Drive, and the main focus I wanted to talk about today is, well, it was, it's basically an extension on what Lee proposed, is switching the middle school tier times with the high school tier times for a few reasons. school tier times for a few reasons. As my previous, as the previous speaker has said, but could not finish, high schoolers actually have to drive, like, most high schoolers have to drive to school every day, and having extremely early start times such as like 7:35 would mean that these high schoolers start out the day groggy, but more importantly, they're behind the wheel of like a two, or a two-ton car, which is a big weapon, and it's a big danger to the people that are on the streets during that time. In fact, a study by the Eastern Virginia Medical School stated that when comparing two demographically comparable counties in East Virginia, it showed that there were 40% more car crashes per teens, and these are teen car crashes, per schools that started at 8:30 versus schools that started around 7:30. So having an hour more school time, which what, which is what Lee stated before, would mean a huge difference in terms of how safe you are when you drive as a high school student and the status of your mind as you drive. But furthermore, the second reason why I believe that high schools should have the later start time is because, well, high schoolers are just more involved before school, because we have debate, we have, we have to compensate that with after-school activities such as sports, et cetera. But we need the time before school, like for morning practices and debate practices. I've actually talked to a couple people, they've said that morning practices just are not feasible anymore if they have to start at, instead of starting at 6 o'clock in the morning last year, if they have to start at 5:50 or 5:35 as they're going to have to start if they start, if the current school's start times are 7:35. So we simply reduce our options for before-school involvement if we have to move towards this change towards a 7:35 schedule, and that's basically all I wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you, James. Marcy Blatt?
I'm Marcy Blatt. My address is 15215 Carriage House Court. I have a child in middle school and a child in elementary school, and I have a three-year-old. I am, we, I'm speaking on behalf of several parents who have approached me to speak. We are very concerned with the late dismissal times of the elementary school. If they are getting out at 4 o'clock or 4:05, as I was told in an email, they would not be getting home. It takes approximately, we live approximately a two-minute walk if we cut through grass, very close to the school. My daughter arrived, arrived home last year 25 minutes after her bus left. So if it takes 25 minutes, and she's the, we're the closest school, closest neighborhood to the school, if it takes 25 minutes to drop my daughter off, if she gets out at 4 o'clock, the earliest that any elementary school child would be getting home is 4:25. Many students arrive after that, which would mean, and I do have the sundown times, that meant most students would be arriving for three, a three-month period of time in the dark. So you're having five-year-olds, five-year-old kindergarteners, arriving home after a long day of school in the dark, walking home. That's not safe. It's also during rush hour. 4:45, I don't know how many cars come zipping through my neighborhood. It is a lot different than at 4 o'clock, yesterday, last year, when my daughter was getting home. It's just not acceptable, it's not safe, it is not safe for these kids to be getting home that late. Also, most after-school activities around the city of St. Louis County start at 4 o'clock. If we are not getting out of school until 4 o'clock, they are not able to participate in them. One thing that I do want to, that I, one other thing, my middle schooler was picked up from school at 6:50 a.m. last year. Ironically enough, this morning I looked at the clock, it was 6:50 when the high school bus came and picked up. So instead of only having three years to get picked up at 6:50 to be at school, now you get four.
Thank you. Jen Kristofferson?
Good evening, my name is Jen Kristofferson. I'm at 332 Bolton Drive. I'm the co-president at Oakbrook Elementary School, and I'm also the mother of two of our 485 students. I'm here tonight to give them a voice to those young kids who aren't here to speak for themselves, and also for their families, who frankly are quite angry. They're angry at Parkway for marginalizing our school and for, if you'll forgive the pun, throwing our kids under the bus by forcing them and asking them yet again to move our start time earlier. In November of 2010, a Project Parkway Task Force was formed and commissioned by you, and that report showed that earlier start times for elementary school students resulted in increased tardiness and daytime sleepiness. And actually, the report concluded by saying that start times earlier than 8 o'clock for any student would go against public research. But you chose to ignore that for our school and for other elementary schools, and now we are starting at 7:45 in the morning, and you're asking us to go to 7:35. I also found my own study that was published in a medical journal, Pediatrics, which found that classroom inattention in elementary school was often linked to sleepiness and lack of sleep, but that they found that a child's inability to pay attention during elementary school had the strongest negative effect on how they performed in high school, regardless of that child's IQ. By forcing these four elementary schools to take the earlier shift, and now the earlier shift, you're ignoring the recommendations of your task force, you're ignoring the research that's available to you on the needs of those elementary school students, and you're sending the message to our parents that frankly, our children don't matter as much as the students at the other elementary schools, and that their education and their future success is sacrificial and less important than the money that you're saving. So what I'm asking you to do tonight is table your vote. I'm asking you to go back to the drawing board and come up with a better plan.[998.63][998.63][applause] I'm asking you to develop a transportation plan that allows the students' real needs, not your time constraints and your financial concerns, to dictate how and when our children learn best. We found $3 million to put artificial turf down at our four high school fields.[1023.25][1023.25][applause] And if we can't find the money to keep our five-year-olds from meeting, from waiting for the bus in the dark in the dead of winter, shame on us. Thank you.[1039.01][1039.01][applause]
I live at 12485 Don Hill Drive. I'm here, I teach second grade at McKelvey School, so I'm here to voice my concerns about the tier-three times, which would be if they were moved 9:05 a.m. to 4 o'clock p.m. Study after study has shown us that every child, no matter the age, greatly benefits from consistency. But if you're changing the start and end times of McKelvey, where we have 612 students, you're not only going to change when they start school and end school, you're going to change their lunchtime, their recess, every academic subject, their bathroom breaks, their specials, it goes on. Also, children that receive any type of services from SSD, interventionists, that's all going to change, and as I talked about earlier, those are the kids that need consistency the most. It's hard because these kids aren't going to easily adjust, and this is one place where kids can expect consistency. Sometimes they don't have that in their home life, and now we're going to take that away. Highways and roads become more congested at the 5 p.m. rush hour, and by dismissing our students later, we're concerned with the amount of students we'll spend on the bus. Also, the VST children, they're going to be traveling a longer distance during peak traffic hours, I'm concerned about their safety getting home later, too. By changing the schools, we talked about daycare, I've heard from several parents who it's hard for them to find adequate supervision before and after school, and now changing it in the middle of the year. And also, I want to say that every teacher has contracted time, and our dismissal, we have 612 kids ranging from five to 11 years old, to get them out in 10 minutes. We have a small parking lot, which is not your fault, but they were built a long time ago. There's no way that we can get 11 buses, two daycare buses, and all the parent pickups in and out of our school in 10 minutes. So you will be asking McKelvey teachers to be there much longer than 4:10. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bridgette. And the four of you will receive a response in writing. Our next four is Jordan Schmidt, Parisa Saraji, Vicki Brown, and Kelly Anthony.
I live at 391 Maidwood Lane. Good evening, I'm a senior at Parkway Central, I'm Jordan, and since the sixth grade, bands played a huge role in my life. In the fall, I'm out on the band field every morning by 6:30. Since the time has been moved up this year to quarter till 8, the marching band has lost one hour of our morning rehearsals every week. If you choose to move up the first tier to 7:35, this will result in one hour and 40 minutes weekly that the marching band has lost. That probably doesn't mean a lot to most of you, therefore, I've put it into terms. That's about one minute of our marching band show, which is less than 10 minutes long. This begs the question, why wouldn't we move the marching band show to, or the marching band practice to after school? Well, we have at least 10% of our band comprised of athletes in the fall. In addition, we have thespians, student council members, debaters, and an astonishing four national merit scholars, four national merit semifinalists in our band. Without morning rehearsals, many, if not all, of these people would be forced to choose between band and their other activities, often leaving band behind. Therefore, why can't we start band earlier? We start at 6:30, why not start at 6, 6:15? We already have neighbors complaining about our instruments, our drums, our metronome, and that's at 6:30, and we don't start the metronome until 7.[1294.33][1294.33][laughter] We shouldn't ignore, or shouldn't ignore their concerns either. Our band has had many wonderful opportunities this year and in the past, whether they be starting the school year by playing at the Parkway Kickoff Picnic, or having the honor of beginning each varsity football game with playing the Star Spangled Banner. I would never want any of these opportunities to be compromised, and I worry that if we were to cut rehearsal time, they would be. As I end tonight, I beg you to consider that not only the marching band, but also other before-school activities will be influenced by your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jordan. Parisa, you're here.
I am Parisa Saraji, 2421 Clayborne Drive. I am here, I have an elementary and I have a middle school, and I'm concerned about my elementary son, that if we are going to shift these times for later on, I am a working parent, and I think that we have to consider that for most working parents, we don't have the flexibility of changing our time. When my son leaves 40 minutes to 9 to get to the bus means for me that I'm not going to get to work, I work downtown. I'm not going to get to work quarter to 10. So all of these, I think, that impacts as a family, at least in my case. And I really agree with the high schoolers that it can be, at least tier-two and tier-one can change, and not to change the elementary school. I mean, I understand all the struggles that we do as a community, but we have to consider as a family, how we are going to deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Parisa. Vicki?
Vicki Brown, 12973 Weatherfield Drive. It's kind of funny because I'm listening to everybody, and I'm like, they're saying everything that I was going to say, so I don't need to say anything. But one of the things I do want to say, I have a daughter in elementary school, and I'm looking at all the different tiers and all this stuff, and I'm thinking that the big issue is, is that it's in the middle of the semester, and we're making all these changes in the middle of the semester. And that's not good for families, it's not good for the kids, it's not good for the teachers, the staff, it's not good for anybody. I think also, if we knew we needed 45 minutes, then why didn't we have it? I mean, that was, if they already knew that that was the standard, then we should have, and not to point fingers or place blame, but just, when we think about these things, we've got to think ahead, instead of trying to pacify people or trying to make them feel better and want to deliver what they want to deliver. So that's all I really want to say, is that I think what everybody's saying here is fantastic, I just hope that you don't do this yet until there's more time to think about it, and don't do it in the middle of the semester. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Kelly?
Kelly Anthony, 1556 Carmen Valley Drive. First of all, I want to thank the many high school students that are behind me and how articulate they were when they made many of my points that I won't have to make tonight. So I'm speaking on behalf of them and their parents that are not happy about the early start time. I am also speaking on behalf of the masses that don't know another change is coming. That is what I am most frustrated about.[1534.74][1534.74][applause] It's, it's the appearance of keeping it under the radar. I believe this billing would be overflowing with people if there was some kind of district-wide email, which I requested from the superintendent. Our student council president asked if he could make an announcement over the school's intercom or the closed-circuit TV system, and he was told no. I'm outraged, and many of the parents that I've talked to are. We don't understand why this information wasn't out so we could voice our opinion like we're doing tonight. You need to hear that. And because I did not receive an email back stating that a district-wide email would be sent, then I had no other choice than to contact the media, which I also stated in the email that I sent to the superintendent. And thankfully, KSDK, KMOV, and Fox 2 KPLR responded and are here tonight, and they ran the news special this morning and this evening. We need to know. They're also, the district held off posting the information on its website until last Friday. How in the world are families? I will go ahead and use this lady's time. Thank you very much. The district held off posting the information on its website until last Friday. How in the world are families supposed to stumble upon this information before this evening so you can hear our voice? The kids did a great job saying what they needed to say and how it was going to impact their day. This is an issue with the bus scheduling, and because there's not enough time with the bus routes. You know you needed 45 minutes and you didn't do it. Now, we are asked to help fix the problem, and if that's going to be the case, we want, we, we in return are asking that the next-year high school classes will not start before 8 a.m. As one student talked about the sleep issues, the high school curriculum is demanding, and grades are a major factor used to determine college eligibility. Most students participate in some form of extracurricular activity. They participate on athletic teams that may require before and after practices. Besides sports, students participate before and after school in many activities, as they mentioned before, in band, orchestra, choir, drama, student council, and various school-sponsored clubs. Others have school jobs, or jobs after school. Most likely, the before-school practices and activities will have to end. Will teachers be able to provide before-school help with homework and questions as they have done in the past? Will the students be able to take advantage of that help this early in the morning? Is the impact of less sleep worth the risk of poor performance in the classroom?
I'm sorry, your, your additional time is up.[1753.02][1753.02][applause] Thank you, Kelly.[1758.24][1758.24][applause] Our next, our next four are Andrew Cogan?
Amy.
Excuse me?
What's your name?
Oh, yeah. Loretta Brandon, Neil Wolfam, and Eileen Moore.
My name's Andrew Cogan. I live at 274 Cleetah Court, which is in Ball One. I am the parent of a child that attends Sorrento Springs, which is one of the four tier-one elementary schools in the district. This seems to be constantly ignored in this discussion when people continually allude to elementary schools and tier-three as being synonymous. Obviously, I'm concerned about safety issues, in particular- Obviously, I'm concerned about safety issues, in particular, the fact that by merely extending the ten-minute window earlier in the day, it increases the number of days that my child and other kids at their bus stop would have to wait in the dark before sunrise five-fold. From late January until the middle of March, they would not see the sun until after-school is already in session. But in addition to my objections to the policy, I also object to this proposal, because it represents such poor policymaking. As the previous speaker mentioned, there were minimal attempts to publicize this proposal in advance of the meeting. It was posted on the district website only on Friday, the slowest day of the news cycle. It was not shared via Facebook. Dr. Marty has defended his actions by pointing out that he has Twittered about it. But alas, Dr. Marty is not Paris Hilton. His fifty-sixth Twitter followers may have been aware of the proposal, but the rest of us were not. In short, I think that this, this sort of behavior, well, I will say no more about that, other than to say that I am livid as to the approach that's been taken. I think you should all be ashamed of yourselves for your inability to properly publicize this, so that people could provide their input. Thank you.
I'm Loretta Brandon, my address is 1664 Schulte Hill Drive. My husband and I have raised two children in the Parkway North area. They went through McCalvy School, they went through Parkway Northeast. We had a graduate of North in '09, and I currently have a senior at Parkway North. I do understand that something is very wrong, and that we need to correct the problem, I don't envy you that. And I'm not here to solve your problem, I'm sorry. And usually, when you complain about something, you should have a way to solve it. But what I am here to say is that, in my opinion, this change is going to end a very special way of life at Parkway North. Both of my kids have greatly benefited from being able to be a part of many aspects of high school life. In fact, my daughter compares it to dining in a buffet. In high school, you try to get a little of this, and a little of that. You try some of this, and you take a little bit more of something else. And by the time you're in college, you know what it's like. And you know what you like, and what to concentrate on, what your favorite things are, what you're good at. And eventually, that translates into a career. The schedules existed for years at Parkway North that has made this very possible to happen. But now, that's at risk. As studies do show, a high school student who gets involved in extracurricular activities usually does much better in the classroom than one that isn't involved. For my kids, they've been able to be in marching band, a full day of classes, and then to participate in after-school activities. It doesn't, it doesn't, it does make for a long day, but with this new schedule, it would make for an even longer day. Not to mention what it does to the programs that meet before school. Where can they make up their rehearsal time? How can they practice? How can they fully be prepared? Does the band have to meet while it's still dark out? Choir uses early morning rehearsal. Multiple organizations meet before school. If we just simply push back everyone's time, you begin to see a day turn into about fourteen hours for a high school student. Or, do they begin to choose to do only one thing? And that's what I consider to be sad, to lose the high school buffet. If we may be struck with the time change this year...
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Neil Wolfman, 12868 Calston Court. I went here a while back, it looks weird seeing middle instead of junior for the name of the school. It seems that we have a crisis created by yourselves. And that's really a good, and then we tried to solve it very quickly, without a lot of open debate, which is a little bit against our republic's founding in our way we like to think we run our public lives. So, please think about it as you make a decision, or table a decision until later. It also seems very strange that last year you changed all the schedules around, and, I don't know, ignored, I guess is probably the nicest word, all the studies about how children need sleep, need to study, which types of children, which age groups of children can naturally wake up earlier, which ones will actually wake up later. And it just, you know, as I say, we've made this crisis, or, you know, your decisions and votes have made this crisis. I don't know how people allow themselves to get put into a situation where they have to have forty-five minutes to do something, and they get told they have to do it in twenty-five or thirty. You know, once again, my guess is that's because parents asked you guys that they didn't like the start times and end times, and people didn't push back for hard enough. But it's pretty hard, I'm sure, for the people doing the scheduling and transportation to say, "Hey, we just can't do it." The answer would be, "Make it work." Okay, obviously, they can't without changes. So, the other thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to congratulate the faculty of our schools. These kids talking have been amazingly, amazing to me how they presented themselves. So, the kids, congratulations, good work. The faculty that have helped them and their parents, good work there as well. And that's it.
Eileen?
Hi, I'm Eileen Moore, 11885 Shallowbrook, and Craig Elementary. I am here tonight to voice my concerns about the change in the school times, specifically the late dismissal times. My children ride the bus and are one of the last bus stops. Right now, it takes twenty-five minutes for them to get home, and with a four o'clock dismissal, that means they will be getting home close to 4:30. Trying to get in, trying to get to any after-school activities, which includes sports, scouts, religious schools, music lessons, or after-school programs, is almost impossible. Dinner, showers, and homework are being pushed back later, leaving virtually no family time. If you have a younger child who has an earlier bedtime, that gives them about three and a half hours to get it all done. My children attend latchkey and are dropped off at 7:30. Returning home nine hours later makes for an extremely long day. If you look at the current plan, three elementary schools dismiss at 3:50, and that includes Parkway. Eight elementary schools dismiss by 3:35. If Parkway makes the changes, we're the only school dismissing at four o'clock. That doesn't seem like it's staying consistent with the neighboring school districts. I don't believe the communication of this proposal was handled properly. I personally heard the news on my way to work on Monday morning on KMOX. Since this all came to light, I found out that McCalvy discussed this at their PTO meeting last week. Dr. Marty, while we greatly appreciated you stopping by Craig's PTO last week, I was wondering why you could not have mentioned it. We had a large turnout at the meeting, and it seemed like it would have been an opportune time to talk about it. We finally received a note in our children's backpacks yesterday. That was from the Craig PTO. I don't feel news that affects the whole district needs to be conveyed by the individual PTOs or KMOX. Last but certainly not least is my concern for the teachers and staff. At Craig, our wonderful teachers and staff are working in crowded classrooms, adding twenty minutes to the day, and now pushing back the dismissal time. I'm fearful we're gonna lose the teachers, who, under these circumstances, still make Craig a strong community that it is.
I'm sorry, your time is up. The next four on our list, Renee Schroeder, Dana Hampton, Hillary Williard, and Mrs. Anne Prossino.
Hopefully, you can hear me, because I'm scared to move that. Hi, my name is Renee Schroeder, I live at 11936 Craigview. I'm actually reading a statement on behalf of Megan Shumpf, and I will give you her address, because she didn't have advance notice of this agenda, so she couldn't get childcare. I would like to voice my concern about the proposed change in school start time at Craig Elementary. For parents, a ten-minute delay in school start time might not seem like much. For me, ten minutes is just long enough that it means I have to start paying for before-school care too. I have worked out my start time with my manager prior to the start of the school year for good faith that Craig's start time would not change. The latest I can arrive at work is 9:00 AM. Right now, I have a child at Craig, so having to pay for before-care would mean an additional eighty dollars a month in childcare expenses for my household. Soon, I'll have two children at Craig. Eventually, we'll have three children, and there, at the same time, for two years straight, before my son moves to middle school. Eventually, this ten-minute change will mean an additional two-hundred-and-forty dollars a month increase in childcare expenses, which based on a nine-month school year is two-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty dollars a year. That is a lot for one year, but over multiple years, it really adds up. And that's from Megan.
Thank you. Dana?
I speak to you tonight as an alumni of the Parkway School District, attending K through twelve, a district substitute teacher, and a parent of three Parkway students. I forgot my name, Dana Hampton, 11890 Featherwood, sorry.
Thank you.
I'll throw that in there. I am asking you to please reconsider the later time for dismissal for elementary schools. The later dismissal time is only having a negative effect on our students, teacher, and school climate. Children are stressed and telling their parents they hate school. I know of many kids, even fifth graders, who are being reduced to tiers after school because of the lack of time they have. They feel like all they have time for is school and homework. Our kids are rushing through their homework just to have a little bit of playtime before dinner and evening activities. We haven't even seen how bad weather is going to affect these times. I personally know of teachers who now stay after school, not being paid until at least 6:00 PM to avoid bumper-to-bumper traffic on the highways, pushing our teachers to be at school so much later, away from their own children, and their activities, and their families. We will be just, that'll be just one more thing to drive excellent teachers away from Parkway and education. Having had two children in middle school, I support the research that states that these students need a later start time. So what about considering working the schedule the other direction, and having an earlier start and ending time for elementary schools, but not to the extreme of Tier One? Can you explain why the board thinks it's a good idea to push our young kids to be away from home until so late in the day? My daughter is only awake for only three hours from the time she gets home until she goes to bed. Does the board honestly agree that is enough time for homework, dinner, showers, family time, not to mention extra activities? In the past, the Parkway School District has always strived for excellence, for our students, and to be a leader in the community. But I believe you are sacrificing and selling out our kids and teachers for a schedule that may look like it works on...
Dana, your time is up. Thank you. Hillary?
Good evening, I live at 1235 Hidden Oak Road, and my name is Hillary Williard. I'm a senior at Parkway Central, and today I would like to, as many others, address the proposed time schedule changes to the school schedule. Throughout the ten years my family has lived in the Parkway School District, and particularly in my own high school experience, I have observed the need for high school students to have a quote "zero hour." Some of you may be familiar with this term. Essentially, many students come to school about an hour before the first bell to receive additional help from teachers, work on science labs or other group work, and some even come to make up tests. Marching band, as Jordan has mentioned, also meets before school to accommodate students who are involved in other activities, especially athletics. When the school board announced last year that we would be starting fifteen minutes earlier, I believe we, the high school students, were frustrated but willing to accept the change for the betterment of the district. Now though, as we contemplating moving up an additional ten minutes, reality needs to be faced. The available time in the morning has already greatly diminished. While some of you may believe that there is other time for students to receive this help, in actuality, that is not true. Many teachers are not available after school, and we only have academic lab twice a week, if it's not taken, for testing or some sort of class meeting. This time in the morning is essential, and moving up the start time even earlier will cause greater problems as you prevent students from reaching their full potential as their time to work and learn decreases. I understand that we have a problem. Students getting to late, students getting to school late is unacceptable, and changes need to be made. Perhaps moving to the currently proposed schedule is an appropriate short-time solution until reevaluations can be made for next year. But I seriously believe that if we permanently move to the proposed scheduling change, the district as a whole will see the consequences for years to come. The Parkway School District prides itself on our students' grades, standardized test scores, prestigious university acceptance rates, and National Merit Scholars. Increasing the start time for high schools, although it may seem like a very small change, will largely affect each and every student, as well as our district's performance. I truly believe that there was a reason why for decades, high schools started second. And it's because we need that time in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Mrs. Prossino?
Good evening, my name's Anne Prossino, I live at 286 Greenbrier Estates Drive. Last school year, parents were asked to comment on the start times, and like many parents of a middle school student, I expressed displeasure at their early starting time. Even though I was also a high school parent, I didn't think there was anything wrong with an 8:00 AM start time for them. Maybe the discussion then should have been, who should start around 7:30? I would recommend we return to our previous schedule of middle school starting first. High school involves four years of students versus three years for middle school. High school students tend to stay up later, and their performance in academics is more critical during these four years prior to college. I feel like we've slippery-sloped ourselves into just switching start times for high school with middle schools. Given the new realities, we should determine this experiment a no-go and return to starting times of previous years. I understand that it would be harder to implement this. I hear what, you know, the problems, but we don't wanna make a decision with lasting implications for years to come. As we look back now, maybe that's how middle school was chosen to start first. I never really understood it until now. It's the smallest group of students to pay that penalty of that early time. This board is not known to make hasty decisions, and I think you all need to get very creative. Maybe look at, is the twenty minutes for the elementary school, is that mandatory? Must you have that? It seems to be causing a great deal of problems. Also, you shouldn't ask for community involvement and buy-in on the front end, and then make changes without involving and communicating to those same groups on the back end. Information did appear on the district website last Friday, but I wonder if that would have happened without the grassroots email and letter campaign that started last week. More importantly, is the issue of the earlier start time for high school. While you write about the start times being a little earlier, it seems a lot earlier than the 8:00 AM start time last year. Had the 7:35 AM time been planned for this year, I imagine the outcry would have been louder. I think most of us lived with and didn't respond negatively to this year's 7:45 AM start, but moved ten minutes earlier and were back to prior middle school start times. We lived through those years, knowing it was only three years. The pressure for grades was not as intense or meaningful, and there were fewer after-school activities and responsibilities. I propose we return to the middle school starting earlier, and allow high schoolers, and allow high schoolers a later start time during this critical time in their, in their educational process. If you have to make a temporary fix, I understand that. But please revisit this issue at a later date and take our thoughts into consideration. Thank you.
My name is Kyle Gunby. My address is 1406 Redwood Forest Drive, just like hers. Um, good evening, my name is Kyle, and I'm a thirteen-year veteran of the Parkway School System, otherwise referred to as a senior. Being such a longtime student, I have come to fully comprehend the physical and psychological stresses of a public school education. I often find myself amazed that the human heart can withstand the rigors of a high school lifestyle, and unfortunately, I have borne witness when the human brain cannot. Simply put, we may arrive at 7:35 in body, but certainly not in mind. Therefore, for the sake of the students, the parent, and most definitely the faculty, either keep the current high school start time, or return it to that of prior years. I trust you'll listen and make the correct decision for all involved parties, and I would like to add that I believe in forgiveness, and we can work this out if we truly believe. Thank you.
Our next person would be Mary Robb, and following her, Mr. Mark Rogers.
Hello, my name is Mary Robb, I live at 260 Glan Door Drive, and I have a daughter who's a sophomore at the South High School. I want you all to know that I am opposed to moving the start times of our high schools back earlier than what they are now. As long as I've been a Parkway parent, I've always noticed that middle and high school schools traditionally start early, and elementary schools start much later. The pre-teen and teen daily sleep and wake cycle shifts to later hours in the day, while children ten and younger tend to wake up early and fall asleep much earlier. I propose that we switch this setup. Have elementary kids start earlier, and middle and high school students start later. Has this option been considered? And if not... Has this option been considered, and if not, why? On a personal note, I want to say, last year, my daughter, when she was a freshman, started at 8 o'clock. The previous year in eighth grade, she started at 7:30. That half an hour made a big difference in her attitude and performance at school. So, time does matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Mark Rogers, 767 Arbor Haven. Um, I'm a 1982 graduate of Parkway West under Al Burr. My mom taught in Parkway for 20 years, and I currently have sons at Oakbrook Elementary, Southwest Middle, and Parkway South High School. I'm involved in PTO, I'm not just here to gripe, in fundraising for Parkway and also as a taxpayer. I understand that many private schools do not have the benefit of a bus system transport to and from and rely on older siblings, parents, car pools, et cetera, to get to and from schools, and that they do a good job, so I do appreciate the fact that it's one of the best public school systems in the country, that you're at least trying to readdress this issue. I also understand that there may not be a perfect solution that solves all issues, but the concern is that a lot of time and analysis went into this current system, and that evaluating times between schools, and then now one month, one month into this school year, we're kind of throwing it all out with the bathwater, and what's to say we won't be here in a month doing the same thing and doing the same exercise? So, my concern is, let's figure out a better plan. We need to table this vote. I think it's pretty obvious, there's no need to rush the vote through. I think it would be penny-wise and pound-foolish to do so, especially with all the publicity. We can turn this into a major positive. I think there's several parents here, and quite honestly, several hundred parents that aren't here, that would have a lot of great ideas that they could bring forth in a forum, maybe not necessarily public speaking like this, because quite honestly, two minutes is literally not enough to communicate what you really need to, but maybe in some type of email format or Facebook format, where you guys as a board could evaluate some of the wonderful ideas that exist out there, in addition to the ones that we're presenting tonight. Several little things, tweaks that can be done to, to the system. In my neighborhood, I've literally got bus stops a stone's throw from each other. You could consolidate those stops and eliminate a lot of time there, you know, increase a lot of the time there. So, little things like that should be evaluated, and I would applaud you that we just tabled this vote and give time to make the change either next year at a proper time. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next four on our list are Fariba Zabetian, followed by Ray English, Mark Dunlop, and is that Barbara Dunlop? Okay, so maybe Fariba's not here. We'll go to Ray English.
Good evening. My name is Ray English. I live at 16 Ridge Creek Road. I have three children who are in the Parkway School District. I graduated one in 2009. She's currently a flourishing student at SIUC, and she was nominated by her class after only being here for two years to speak at their graduation. I also served as a guest teacher. I worked for this district in 2007, 2008. I think it's a fabulous school district. We returned to Missouri from the state of Utah, and we chose to live here because of this district, as many of the parents here have chosen to do. Also, everyone in this room who's above the age of 18 probably voted for you, and we voted for each of you against someone else. We chose you. We asked you to represent us and to make decisions. I'm a parent. Decisions can be very hard, particularly when you're talking money, particularly when you're talking getting places and getting there on time, but these are our kids, and I ask that you use intellectual honesty. Listen to the people who are here, who are asking you to not do this, who have made suggestions, fabulous suggestions. Listen to the kids. If we tell these kids their voices matter and we do not listen to them, we're hypocrites. We cannot be trusted. That matters. It matters. I am vested. Next year, when my senior in high school graduates, I will have a child in college for 11 straight years. I want them to go to college. I want them to do well. You cannot start at 7:35 and be cognitively aware. It cannot happen. It can't happen. If she wants to get into a good school, just like her sister, she has to not only make good grades and also do well on standardized tests, she has to be involved civically. Where is that time going to come from? She has to be involved in extracurricular activities. Where is that going to come from? Please listen, and do not make a hasty decision. I, I really appreciate what Mr. Gumbey said.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Dunlop, 2153 Parter Royal Drive in DePere. I have two high schoolers and just came back from parent-teacher conferences, and I know that's part of the reason why a lot of the Parkway South parents are not here, because of the parent-teacher conferences they're at. But I'll tell you one thing that I learned today after going to some of the afternoon sessions with those conferences. Your teachers are frustrated with the situation. Your teachers are saying already, the kids are sleeping in class. Your teachers are already saying, we have an issue here. High schools should not begin any earlier, but begin perhaps at a later time, because many high school after-school activities don't start earlier than former years. The coaches come in from other schools that let out later, and so school activities don't begin until 4, 5 o'clock at times. This leaves students with more time after school and before after-school activities. Some of them, you know, they mingle, they socialize, but guess what time my kids who are involved in the Parkway School System come home? 9, 10, 10:30 on school nights. From school activities, and they have several hours of homework, there's not enough hours in the night to get the necessary rest, to get up at 6:30 for a 6:50 AM to get to school now. We have a problem now. Let's not make it worse. Let's move the high schools to a later time. I continue by saying, with high schools starting 15 minutes earlier each day and after-school activities ending at the same time, high schoolers are working with sleep deficit of an hour and 15 minutes each week this school year. Another 10 minutes earlier each day will give them another 50 minutes of desperation each week. With activities also on weekends, marching band, all-day competitions, church, part-time jobs, scout camps, activities, they don't have the luxury that I have as an adult. They can't sleep in. Guess what? Sleeping in on the weekends is not an option to make up for the sleep that they lost during the week. Our students are falling asleep in class already. Let's not make it worse. They cannot remember information.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. Barbara?
I'll continue, same address. Um, other students we've heard from, our children and other teachers, may self-medicate. They use energy drinks, caffeine, or other things to stay awake and be alert to take exams and things. Others suffer more illnesses and headaches because their immune systems can't cope with the constant stress and the lack of sleep. Students operating under these conditions can't do as well on tests, which are really important in high school. Their grades and test scores are put on a transcript and may be the determining factor in whether or not they'll be able to attend college, because college acceptance and scholarships, awards depend on these scores. Missouri has new goals for our students. More students are taking and passing multiple AP classes. These require more homework and study time. AC test scores averaging 25. Good results on, and of course, exams in more subject areas. Higher attendance percentages and higher scores on other tests like the math, the plan, and the PSAT. Their scores on these tests matter. How can they achieve these goals when they are sleep deprived and ill? Please reconsider which schools have earlier start times. Thank you for your professional consideration on these important, on these important decisions that affect thousands of students, family members, teachers, and staff.
Thank you very much. The next four. Brandon Schenberg, Patricia Vought, Denise Jadali, and Lee Cannon.
I am Brandon Schenberg. I reside at 1399 Shetler Road. I'll make my comments brief, as most of the students and parents and community have reiterated what I've said. Ladies and gentlemen, you guys said you don't want a Band-Aid solution, and that you made your decision based upon the best evidence that was available. Look around this room. Look at the multiple pieces of evidence that have been provided to you. Clearly, you must table your vote today based off the very qualifications that you provided. Members of the Board said they don't want a Band-Aid solution. Get a look at Tier One, and I have elementary school students starting there. Yet, we want elementary schools to start later? You're contradicting the very values that you try to represent. Ladies and gentlemen, I come from a great school district, a great community, and this requires a great solution. This community will take nothing less. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brandon. Patricia Vought. Denise Jadali.
Good evening. My name's Denise Jadali, and I live at 1703 Stifle Lane Drive. And, um, a lot of my comments were similar to, um, other parents. I have, um, a son that graduated from Parkway Central in 2009, and I have my younger son, um, who's a junior at West right now, and, um, I'm concerned about the earlier start time. I sympathize with all the parents. Everybody has different perceptions and, and different problems, and we've got teachers that are unhappy, and, you know, um, I've been there, I've had my kids out at the bus stop at, um, crack of dawn, you know? I'm, I'm mostly concerned about my son not getting enough sleep, and I know he chooses to do after-school activities. He's an athlete. He's also an honor student. Um, I'm very proud of most, of him and most of his friends are high-achieving students. We have high-achieving students in this district, so they do do honors classes, they do do after-school activities, and that makes them a better person. I know where they are. I contribute, um, my children being drug and alcohol-free because they were involved in school, and, um, they took that pledge of athletics seriously. So, um, I just worry that he's either, you know, on a good night, he's home by 6:00. On a night that he's like, right now, he's doing cross-country, he might not get home till 8:00 or 9:00. Um, I beg him to go to bed at 11:00, or he passes out trying to do his homework, and he gets up at 5:00. So, um, I'm just concerned about them starting that early, and I know everybody has their own different needs and their own family situation, but that's my concern about, um, the health of, of these children and not getting enough sleep. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cannon?
Good evening. Lee Cannon, 1276 Oak Park, and I don't know how long this meeting's going to go on, but several of my friends are freezing in the audience. I was wondering if it might be a little more warm in here for the remainder of the meeting, if you can do anything about that, so. Uh, I echo a lot of the sentiments that were brought up by the speakers before me. I think they had a lot of, uh, very salient points in the conversation, and, and I would suggest that you take the time to, to, uh, study this before making a, a decision. I do know that you are somewhat of an pickle. Um, you know, you have students right now that are getting to school 20 minutes late, so something needs to be done pretty quickly, uh, but then changing these start times, as you've seen, can, can raise various concerns, both on the beginning and on the end times. Uh, I, I would like to say, I believe that Mr. Stockwell and Mr. Rosa were given somewhat of an impossible task. They seemed to be doing their job rather well last year with 45-minute turnaround times, uh, through the cycles going from Tier One to Two and Two to Three, and I don't know how adamantly they voiced their opinions on the feasibility of these 30 and 40-minute cycles which you're currently running, but it seems like they were, they're basically given an impossible task. They've told you that 10 buses at $300,000 to $400,000 annual per year would not solve the problem, uh, and that to go to a two-tier system would cost, uh, $3 to $4 million, and I'm assuming that's annual, and I know resources are scarce. But the one question that I wonder is, how many more buses and routes would it take to fix and keep the current schedules? I don't know that answer. I'm sure that, that that would be an expensive number, but I'm just wondering, as one solution, if that's been considered and, and how much that would cost, and, and whether or not we actually have that amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Our next ones would be Andrew Panhelo, Abigail English, Andrew... Starts with a K. Okay. And Winston, Winston Lu, Luo. Is Andrew? Oh, good. Thank you.
All right, I'm Andrew Panhelo. I live at 843 Monarch Drive in DePere, and I'm a senior at Parkway South. And I'll try to make this quick, because according to the studies referenced earlier, I should be asleep right now if I want to go to school tomorrow. And I just want to say one thing. It bothered me when you guys proposed taking 80 hours of sleep away from me per year, but when you just straight-up lied to me about it, I'm offended. And my mom, when I told her I was coming here, she almost didn't let me go, because she's like, I don't think there is that meeting. She didn't believe that this existed. So, my mom, who reads her emails every day, she wasn't even notified of this meeting. I mean, that's ridiculous. And I just want to point out the hypocrisy of Parkway in this meeting. Um, you said that your two priorities are safety and education. Well, safety, you're sending kids to school. They might not necessarily always be falling asleep at the wheel, but they're definitely, definitely driving at a state worse than they normally would be. That's not in anybody's better interest, and you're also putting elementary school kids at home in the dark. And also, in education, you have kids falling asleep in class. I've fallen asleep in class multiple times this year. I'm not going to deny that. St. Louis Post-Dispatch just released an article about the ACT scores for the districts around St. Louis. We lost to Kirkwood, Webster, Ladue, Clayton, Rockwood, Lindbergh, among others. These are all comparable school districts, and it's because we aren't getting the sleep that we need. A lot of these are, a lot of these schools are starting later than we are. So, I've been going to Parkway for 13 years, and our teachers have always been saying that there's the right way, and there's the Parkway. Well, prove them wrong for once. Thank you.
Uh, hi. My name is Abigail English, 401 Crest Drive. I'm a senior at Parkway West. My mom recently spoke. This is only my fifth year in Parkway, and from the day that I walked in, I've been impressed with how these schools operate, the standards that the teachers have, the standards that the students have. Never before have I been pushed academically so hard. And so, that brings me to the most important point that I think that the presenters have ignored. Nowhere in the entire presentation did I hear the word "student" or "learning." I only heard tiers, I only heard dollar signs, and I'm sorry, but I thought that this was a school, and then it's about learning. And I understand that there are problems and functionalities that need to be addressed. However, students, us, the five-year-olds that are going to be waiting in the dark, the parents, the families, the community, that's the number-one priority, so it's your responsibility, and we are relying on you. We put our education, our future, hundreds of kids, thousands of kids, probably future in your hands, and we count on you, and we trust you to make the right decision, and to make a decision that not you personally would feel comfortable with, but what the people believe in. Thank you.
Before I begin, I want to let you know that I will be taking Winston Lu's two minutes. He left, and he granted me that. Thank you. All right. Um, my name is Andrew Keenley. My address is 1206 Berke's Court. I'm a senior at Parkway West High School. I appreciate all your work over the past months on these issues, and I know that there are very difficult decisions and compromises that have had to have been made. However, I fear you are missing the picture. You see numbers and dollar signs, as Abigail said. We are not numbers and dollar signs. We are people, we are students, and we need our opinions valued. I won't, I won't continue to reiterate the points that have been made, but I must address the issue that I'm most passionate about. I see that the main justification for the change in scheduling from last year to this year was money. I understand the need for a lean budget, but at what cost? Are you genuinely willing to neglect the health of your students for the sake of saving a dime? It disgusts me to watch multimillion-dollar turf fields install at all four high schools when we can't even afford buses for our students. I find it ludicrous, I find it ludicrous to make cuts to buses a necessity while sacrificing the convenience and health of Parkway students. We are the future leaders of the world. I know how much you care about your students, so please, stand by that. Before I conclude, I want to thank my principal, Dr. Mitchell, for allowing me to make a statement, a school-wide announcement, to inform and rally my fellow students. It's because of this respect for free speech and the efforts of my fellow students that we are here today. Again, I thank you for your work, and I implore you, take our opinions into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Unfortunately, this last one, I can't read. The first name is Mike, and the last name starts with an M. Thank you.
My name is Mike Muzi. I live at 1213 Arbor Bluff Circle. Uh, very many great points have been made tonight. I particularly would, uh, thank the representative from Oakbrook who spoke for many of the parents. Uh, obviously, students at every age level, elementary, junior high, and high school have before and after-school activities, so whatever grade level you're going to start at 7:30, those parents are going to be a little bit unhappy. The middle-tier students are going to be the best off, because they can- The middle-tier students are going to be the best off because they can do before and after-school. The third tier probably is going to have some problems with after-school activities. But that is not unique to any age group. You know, if you look at any of those groups, they all have before and after-school activities. And so what I would like to say is that for the... The thing that's probably been discussed the least here, that's been brought up by a few people, is that the four elementary schools are being treated like high schoolers, the ones that are in tier one. None of you mentioned it on the board, except for Dee, who thought it was only two. And as far as the number of students affected by it, those are 1,600 students in those schools. And if they are starting earlier, they are affected for six years. There are some concerns about three years versus four years for high school versus junior high or middle school. Sorry, I'm sorry, my H. You know, the elementary schools are there for six years. And you've got 1,600 students that are affected by that. So please, take the Oak Brook comments to heart that you're affecting a large number of elementary school students when you're making this decision, when you're lumping them in with the high schoolers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We thank each and every one of you who have made comments here tonight. I'd like to make sure you understand that you will receive a response from me in writing. And I appreciate, again, all the comments that have been made. Would anyone here, the board members or superintendent, have anything they would like to say? And just thinking about the things that have been said before we ask for a vote? If not?
You're looking at me, President.
I will tell you, I do have concerns about the four elementary schools. And I wonder if there's something we can work out so that they don't have to start a little bit earlier. I think it will help some traffic situations, too. I... Sorry, I lost my train of thought.
May I? If we're going to take a vote and if we're going to table this, at what point do we table this?
It would be right now.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we table 11.01. I'm sorry, 11.02. Approval of revised school starting and ending times to another time.
Could you go back? I couldn't hear what you said.
I know you're trying to be helpful, but we're trying to do business. And if we can't hear each other, we can't do business.
Obviously, based on all the comments, emails, and so forth, I would like to make a motion to table action item 11.02. Approval of revised school starting and ending times to a future date. So we have time to think about all the great suggestions, especially from the students. We appreciate it.
I'll second her motion.
We won't have any discussion here. Any further discussion?
Well, it seems like we're at a point here of dealing with something that's a critical... I mean, there's a problem. We've all recognized that there's a problem. So if we don't do anything about it now, if we don't make an action on now, we're just kicking the can down the road. And, you know, the impact is going to... It's going to be felt. If we have two spare buses, there's going to be a problem. And it's going to be compounded because we don't take action.
Any other comments?
As you all know, this is a very complex situation. And I do want to congratulate and thank students particularly and the parents who have shared their thoughts and ideas this evening. And it all makes sense. However, in making a decision such as this, we might help someone, such as one level, and hurt someone else. And I, you know, and I've been in the district a long time as an administrator. I know what the problems are in terms of transportation and how difficult and how complex it is to get, you know, so many students. And at one time, we had 27,000, 28,000 students that we were transporting. But, you know, at this point, we are where we are. And it seems that we just need to make an adjustment this year to make this work and not complicate things any more than they are. Because there isn't a satisfactory solution at this point in time in terms of turning everything around. Because what we've heard is that even the high school is not happy with the 7:45, let alone the 7:35. And that complicates it all the more as well. So at this point, I think that people have to have patience and understanding that we are where we are. We do not want to continue the school year with having so many students, a third of the students, tardy to school. And I know it is difficult to make changes at this point in time. But what better opportunity is there than what we have right now without starting over? And that's going to take a lot more time. It's going to go well into the semester. And consequently, we're hurting our students. We're taking away from their education. And as a parent who's been through this, I know that sometimes we just need to make adjustments. I have children and grandchildren who have to make adjustments in their schedules because of transportation, because of the school schedules. So at this point, I think the patience and understanding of the community would be very, very helpful to make a decision, an adjustment at this point in time, that could be studied for the balance of the year in terms of what we do for the future. So that's my thought.
Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we stay with the... Oh, we have a motion.
All right, well, let's have a vote on that motion to table the decision on the revised times. Ms. Calanda, roll call.
Mr. Applebaum?
No.
Mrs. Castillo? Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
No.
Mrs. Mulgeman?
Yes.
Dr. Sieratino?
No.
Mr. Jacob?
No.
So now, if you would make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we stay with the proposed schedule for this year and study the changes that we can make for the future that would address the concerns and the issues of the community. And hopefully, come up with a better plan for the future beyond this year.
May I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Calanda?
We have some discussion.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
I guess if everybody hasn't left yet, and Andrew in particular, if you're still in the House, I would like to address a few of the issues that were raised. And certainly, I've listened to every one of them. I made notes on every one of them. Our ACT scores are from last spring, when 98-plus percent of Parkway students took that test. And if that resulted in our scores being slightly lower than some of our competitor districts, where 70% of the students took the test, I'm happy to take that hit. With respect to the reference to all of the research, we did look at that in excruciating detail last spring. And the research that we saw was unambiguous in identifying middle schoolers as the most vulnerable age group with respect to developmental issues and starting school earlier. The moment of puberty is when melatonin starts to take effect and changes the sleep cycle. That impacts middle schoolers to a greater degree than high schoolers. That's the research I read. When it comes down to a balancing act, you try to do the most good you can. In the earlier presentation, we had two big points on the table. Number one was the additional 20 minutes in the elementary school day. I am unambiguously convinced that that was a necessary change. We had the second shortest elementary school day in St. Louis County. That's every school district in St. Louis County. Our administrators said we needed more resources to give to our elementary kids a longer school day to teach that curriculum. That's what we voted for. That's what I voted for. And I stand by that decision. The research said our middle schoolers were the most vulnerable cohort, and we moved them an hour later in the day. I stand by that decision. This isn't an open debate. I'm stating the reasons for my decision. And we read extensive... We had a committee that sorted through and validated research. I can Google right now and come up with research that will say just about anything. So as a board member, we have to rely on the professionalism and the abilities of our administrators. And as far as the initial decision to make 30-minute and 40-minute gaps between tier one and tier two, clearly, that was a mistake. We are not infallible. The issue before us today is not one where we can take away that 20 minutes from the elementary school and not one where we can reshuffle the entire tiers. We need to address the immediate crisis, which is kids are not getting to school on time and they are getting home later than we even planned. I think the present motion addresses that. I'm entirely in favor of it. Thank you.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Can I participate in this?
Yes, please.
Because I feel, and I hope those students stay... The last couple of weeks I've had the opportunity, or last week, to have some really good discussion with students, as well as PTO presidents and others. And one of the things that I would offer in this motion is, we do have a problem right now. And I stand by my earlier recommendation that it needs to be corrected. But I'm also willing to work with students and staff and the community in the next year, the next several months, to look at some other alternatives. And I think what we've heard tonight is, and I think a lot of people spoke very much to the problem we have at hand. We're trying to make everything fit within a defined period of time. There are schools in this country, and I've shared this in my discussion with students and parents, that are looking beyond the daily schedule. Zero hours was mentioned, looking more at our high schools, perhaps maybe middle schools being a bit more flexible. Now, we're not going to solve that tonight. That takes some time. But with the help of the students and their willingness to work with us, and parents and educators, I think that this may be something we can do in the next couple of months. Or maybe it'll be at least, you know, something we can do over some time. But I think it's worth, even if we're in this issue, I profess that we have outstanding schools here. Our high schools in particular are busy places. And we may just naturally need to start looking at them a little bit differently with some options. I've shared with parents and students, I've often felt that high schools should begin to look more like colleges, where we don't have a defined period of time like we do at elementary, middle, and we need to think more flexibly. Now, again, we're not going to, you know, people shouldn't leave here tonight saying we made that decision. It'll take some time. But I think with the motion, I'm willing to take that on as superintendent with other educators and certainly the parents' participation and students and have those discussions. And I think that's part of the motion. We solved the problem now. We don't allow some students to be in school late. But we commit to further studying, and not just around busing, around the whole issue of how we can look at middle and high schools, or at least high schools, differently.
Okay, thank you. Any other... Yes, please.
I just wanted to clarify that my vote to table, thank you, had not... I'm in complete agreement with what Mr. Major said. It has nothing to do with flip-flopping times or with the 20 minutes. I just wanted to be clear about that. I just felt maybe we could tweak a little. But so I wanted to clarify that. And I wanted to say one more thing because it was brought up several times tonight about the turf fields that were installed. If you go back to the 2008 bond issue that the voters approved, that money was from the 2008 bond issue. So I just wanted to make sure everyone in the room understood that.
And bond issue money is for permanent improvements, capital improvements, not for daily operational costs.
One of the issues, and all the issues that were brought up were great. And it's issues that have been part of the discussion for all this. But one of the issues that was brought up was consistency. And we... There's a crisis that's been identified. And the only way to deal with that with the minimal impact on consistency is what is being proposed by the Transportation Department. As opposed to some of the other suggestions that might have merit with regards to shifting times dramatically, I think that would cause a major issue mid-semester like this.
Mr. Major?
And Mr. Jacob, if I did not mention the elementary schools on tier one, I apologize. I was probably treading lightly because my daughter is a fourth grader at Oak Brook. As they say, all politics are local. And certainly, when I get home tonight to 717 Juniper Glen Court, there will be a price to be paid. And I'm willing to pay it.
It's really frustrating for us to sit up here and listen and not be able to respond to comments. Because I think oftentimes, we want to jump in and say, "But this," or "But that," or "You forgot to mention this." And jumping off of what Bruce said about all politics being local, one thing that you learn the minute you step onto this side of the table is perspective. Four years ago, my perspective was where you all were sitting. My perspective was one of apparent concern for my two children. And I, as a parent, would be an advocate for my children no matter what. And I might have been sitting in the audience with you tonight and expressing my own dismay at these changes that I didn't understand. But where we sit, we're not making these decisions personally. We're making these decisions for the 17,500 students that we have taken an oath to do our best for. Now, not one of the seven of us are logistics experts. None of us are in the transportation field. What we do as board members is we listen to what is proposed by our administrators. As you can see, we ask a lot of questions. And with the information at hand, we make the best decision possible. Some people might not take into account that people on the early tier want to be on the late tier. And those on the late tier would rather be on the early tier. And it is absolutely impossible to make everyone happy. And that's not our job. Our job is to do the very best we can and serve all of the Parkway students. Thank you for letting me make my speech.
Actually, since I was directed, a lot of it was directed at me. And by the way, we talked Friday night.
We did talk.
Yes. Well, I'm sorry. But I guess one of my senses is that we've had a lot of discussion in the community starting last spring. And we had an urgency to deal with this. There was no attempt on the part of the board, or myself or others, to deny access. Obviously, we spent a lot of time listening to all 38 comments tonight. So there was not an attempt to deny that. But we need to deal with the issue. And like I say, we said earlier, you heard it, we tried to solve this over the last couple of weeks. I hope we wouldn't have to bring it to the board. And that decision was just really made in the last, really, 10 days, that we run out of options and we really needed to correct this. So I apologize if that's the impression, but that was not the goal here. And obviously, I hope you see that this board took a lot of time tonight to allow people to have input.
Are there any other... I'm sorry, Helen.
Just a note on tabling this issue. The reason I put forth the motion to table is because I heard one word from everybody, and that was "listen to us." And I'm listening. I'm listening.
Thank you, Helen. Is there any further comment or discussion at this time? I'm sorry, there... We have a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
Does she want her to read the motion?
I'll read the motion.
Yes. Ms. Calanda, would you read that, please, with Dr. Marty?
We stay with the proposed schedule for this year and make changes for a better plan beyond this year.
Okay. The roll call, then?
Are we voting to adopt the recommended changes?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe we should insert the word "adopt" for proposed changes. So it's clear.
Maybe we should insert the word "adopt" for proposed changes, so it's clear.
With further study to see if we can solve things for elementary and--
You're changing Sam's motion, so--
Okay.
I'll be fine with that.
Well, we can just change-- Can we just change it again, and it'll be all clear?
Okay. I have "Stay with the adopted," or "Adopt the proposed changed schedule for this year and make changes for a better plan beyond this year."
So move.
Well, wait. I have a motion in a second already.
Okay.
Okay. So, Ms. Kalanda, roll call, please.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Castillo?
No.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Yes.
Dr. Sirtino?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Six one.
I just want to clarify, and again, I want to just-- I will bring back to the board some ideas of how we can organize ourselves to further study this. That was part of the motion. I want to-- I'm sincere about our desire to look at those options.
All right. The board will take a five-minute recess to come back and do the rest of our business.
Okay, we're going to continue with the business at hand. Six point oh, call for an executive session, there is none. Seven point oh, approval of agenda for the September twenty first, two thousand and eleven. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Eight point oh, resolutions, energy awareness month. May I ask for a motion to adopt the resolution for energy awareness month?
Uh huh. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Nine point oh, communications. Nine point oh one, calendar of meetings. The next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, October fifth, two thousand and eleven, here at Central Middle School, starting at seven thirty P. M. Nine point oh two, liaison reports. Anybody?
I know I've done stuff, I just don't remember what it was.
I know, me and Helen went someplace and we can't remember where it was.
We were all at the Parkway, Project Parkway meeting.
We were.
We all have some timers.
Great turnout.
I want to say the twenty-fifth annual Cutman County spelling bee was outstanding.
Oh yeah.
It was outstanding, and I want to thank everyone who was involved voluntarily. The directors, the faculty directors were incredible to give their time and to prepare the student actors and crew as they did. The students were phenomenal, and I recommend that they present the program at the meeting next summer.
There you go.
And I, for one, participated in two dedication ceremonies for the brand-new, beautiful per fields we have at Parkway West and Parkway Central. And I went to the home opener for the mer-
For capital improvement.
Capital. Well, I think the thing that everybody likes about that is when you now see those fields, you see the football team on one end and the band on the other at the same time. And of course, we don't have to worry about any of the other sports that might use it, or including P. E. that use it. The field gets, I don't think the Board, I know that we wouldn't have voted for it if it was only going to be a football field. It's a field for all students now, and I think that's the great thing about it. And we'll enjoy it for the next several many, many years. Any other liaison reports?
Mr. President, just had the pleasure of joining a rotating cast, as it were, in visits to the early childhood centers at Valley Park, Brentwood, and Ferguson Florissant. I think you joined me at Brentwood, and-
Pleased, pleased.
Interesting to see how other districts do it, and I think we've derived some useful benchmarks from that exploration, and certainly look forward to sharing those and putting them to use in our next step for Parkway.
And we've actually committed to get us together at some point, those of us that had the visits, to summarize and talk about some potential things we could put into place.
Great, look forward to that. All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Let's move on. Ten point oh, action items. These are the consent items from ten dot oh one through ten dot one seven. Is there any discussion?
Motion.
Okay. May I have a motion in a second to approve the action items ten point oh one through ten point one seven?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion, or need to be taken up for discussion? All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Now, eleven point oh, action items. These are individual ones that we have to vote on. Eleven point oh one, the adoption of the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve tax rate that Mr. Stockwell so eloquently presented to us tonight. May I ask for a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve and adopt the tax rates by category as presented, and the blended tax rate for the Parkway School District for two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, in the amount of three point nine zero four six, to be distributed with a special revenue fund rate of two dollars and thirty-five point eight one cents, a general fund rate of one dollar two zero six five cents, capital project rates at zero cents, and debt service fund rate at point three four cents.
So moved.
Second, and can I request a roll call vote, please? Mr. President?
Yes, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Alomar?
Yes.
Mrs. Castillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulgrew?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Point of order, I think the President said point three four cents. I think that should be thirty-four cents.
Thirty-four cents is what I meant. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Mrs. Mulgrew?
Yes.
Dr. Sferratino?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. The motion carries seven zero. Report, twelve dot zero, report, there are none. Thirteen point zero, work sessions. It's been suggested that we move to October fifth, the thirteen point oh two, the gifted and mosaics discussion, and thirteen point oh three, the preliminary discussion for the science program, so that we'll be fresh and able to digest everything that comes to us. So we will go with Desi on thirteen point oh one, the attendance area update. You're done. I'm kidding.
Thank you, President, taking my questions, all in, board members.
Thank you for everything you've done.
Bye.
Thanks, Peter. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, first I want to just start by a little bit of a recap. I know I think we've all got to get a pre-lost form of our processes along the way, but I do think it's important to just kind of take a few brief look back that we've had along the way, and why we're here tonight. Obviously overcrowding, particularly at McKelvey and Craig, mostly in the north area. We've had, as far as enrollment patterns and trends go, really there's been some inconsistency in enrollment patterns and trends in populations there, and we also know that some of the enrollment patterns and trends are projected to continue to rise, so we really needed to address the issues that were confronting us. Some of the other things that we do, which there's a positive, negative to it, we do have the smallest class sizes in our history, which is a wonderful thing, but in itself can create some of the overcrowding that we're experiencing. With that, we've added programs and people, so we have more adults in the building, we have more technology, in general, more overall resources, and we have more student needs to be addressed. So all those things compound and really exaggerate the overcrowdedness. It's not necessarily that we have tons and tons more kids, but we've reduced the class sizes to a very, very, very good standard, and we've also added programs, and all those things combined have helped create the overcrowding that we're facing today. So a little bit of the background, Project Parkway needs assessment, although we knew that we were facing some of the overcrowdedness, but the Project Parkway needs assessment, starting in February of two thousand and nine, really magnified it and brought it to light. After that process, the Board directive was overcrowding in the north area, fix it, and that came about in June two thousand and ten. That fall, a task force worked together to come up with some solutions to the overcrowding. In the end, the initial task force, if you remember, the short-term recommendation was to have a kindergarten center at River Bend. Two of the other options that were presented at the time, one was a boundary adjustment, and another one dealt with the possibility of reopening the I. S. C. or Robin Hill, former Robin Hill Elementary, as an elementary building. Those two were put to side, and kindergarten center came to head as a short-term recommendation, mainly considering the financial costs of trying to renovate and get a building ready quickly enough to really address the problem, and then also the idea of boundary changes. We had a couple other things we were waiting for as well, to kind of iron out, one of those being full-day kindergarten. And some of those decisions are still weighing in. So with the decision to move forward on full-day kindergarten, I know the principals felt like they could make this work one more time, but in doing so, we did have to allocate additional resources to those buildings, although it wasn't building on rooms or anything. We certainly added more staff to accommodate and put T. As. in classrooms, and we've done that throughout the year, so we can continue to have our student-teacher ratios very low. One decision still out there, that we're still uncertain about, is the unaccredited schools and how the Turner lawsuit may impact our schools and school population. So that's still out there. But taking all those things into consideration, there was a need to connect, and we formed the Connections Task Force in December of two thousand and ten. That task force combined leaders from the Steering Committee and other task force leaders, district personnel, and also brought in the north and central area principals. We considered those options that were presented up by the initial task force, but ultimately decided that we would look at boundary adjustments as the solution. Also, taking into consideration, we were, you know, sometimes, when we were thinking about the fiscal and financial responsibilities, we had to look at whether it was reopening an area, or we had to look at a River Bend Elementary that had two hundred thirty to two hundred forty students, and the neighboring school had six hundred students in it. And so, in consideration was that first, before we explore opening any buildings, we need to look at the option of possibly utilizing our current facilities. So we worked with the Versitrans consultants, starting last winter-spring, and working to develop a scenario, and in fact, we found out that it was a viable option to adjust the boundaries and make this work, and kind of balance the enrollments and get a viable solution. First, we looked at what Versitrans brought for us, then we did some task force work on our own, and started to come up with some scenarios. And then in the spring, we sent out a survey, if you recall, we had about over thirteen hundred parents responded from the north and central area. That helped us prioritize the Board guidelines, also provided feedback for our implementation procedures. But what we learned from the survey was that the guidelines were pretty good. We first asked the survey respondents to try to rank them in order, and say which ones were most important, and what we found out on that scale, they felt like they were all pretty important. And then we asked them to kind of pick their top three, and that helped us prioritize when they had to only select three. So we used that in the implementation feedback to start guiding a decision. Three options were developed and reviewed at that time, and as we worked through the summer, we kind of tweaked those and looked at the numbers and tried to get the most recent data we had as enrollments came along. We presented the three options to the Connections Task Force this August, and then what happened after that was the Superintendent's Action Team and two groups from the Connections Task Force evaluated the scenarios using a decision matrix. And we kind of went into the decision matrix the last time we here, and I'll give a brief review of that in just a second. But the bottom line is, after we went through the evaluation matrix that you saw last time, the results were nearly identical between the three groups. So looking at the decision matrix, again, just a reminder, this incorporated our Board goals, our district goals, also what we were trying to get as a desirable enrollment range, and keeping schools from being overcrowded, and then it ranked and weighted the Board guidelines. And so that weight distribution, the participants could either give a one, two, or three, three meaning this fits this criteria the best, and then it was multiplied by the weight. And so, when it came out, our results, our matrix results, we looked at three different scenarios, and you can see by the results that the highest numbers were very close, two-ten, two-thirteen, and two-thirteen. So all three groups, in a separate time and location there, had very, very similar results. So we felt pretty confident to move forward with scenario three here tonight. Just to review, here's a photo of our, or outline of our current boundaries, and here's the proposed changes that I want to walk through right now. So you can see the shift, and I just kind of want to point out to you, it looks like the green area, River Bend, but if you can look right along where the pointer's going, that's a non-residential area, it's the flatlands, and also the park area in there, too. So although geographically it looks and is bigger, as far as the residential areas, it really isn't. So taking a look to highlight those areas, what that area moved, two neighborhood planning units from McKelvey to River Bend, and I'm going to go into specifics about what those areas are in just a second. It also moved this section, and that's, just to kind of familiarize you with that, because it's a little hard to see, but the little strip in between there, right about where the sea is, that's the Bennington, that's Bennington and Page right there, and so Bennington going north. So that area is currently Craig, and that section would move Craig students to Ross, and this section would be Old Farm Estates, and that would move the section of Old Farm Estates and the areas just north of Amiata to River Bend. Take you through that, so I'll kind of talk through that, too. So just to summarize what you saw on the slide before, Ross to River Bend would move Old Farm Estates and adjacent homes just northwest of Amiata. Woodland Point, currently Woodland Point is right next to Fernridge High School, and it doesn't have any students located there at this time, but just in case there was one to move in, that would be part of the River Bend and central attendance area. The McKelvey students to River Bend, it would move the Pheasant Run complex, and pointed out that that was the complex just because there is a River Bend subdivision also right there, and so wanted to make sure that the Board understood the difference, that it wasn't all of Pheasant Run. And then Royal Pines condominiums also, would move from McKelvey to River Bend in this scenario. The Craig to Ross would be Driftwood Place and Pavilion and West Point, and those are those areas, I'll go back a slide, right in this yellow area right there, and I want to point out that it's, the reason there's an asterisk, and it says just the areas that are west of Bennington, because those housing areas split Bennington, so they are on both sides, but it would just be the Pavilion side west of Bennington, and the West Point side west of Bennington. That's what the new attendance areas would look like, again, without the highlighted areas in them, and then I'll point out to some of the numbers, the shift. And I do need to point out that these numbers are fluctuating numbers, based on enrollment, they go up and down. And so, these were the numbers we used at the start of the school year. Our current numbers, of course, have shifted since then, and they will, they'll continue to fluctuate up and down throughout the school year. One thing we did learn in, or that at least I learned in doing this, in working through the task force, was a trend over the last four years. Nathan ran some numbers for me of our beginning enrollment and our end enrollment for those school years, and what we found out is there is a fluctuation during the school year, but pretty much what these four schools start with, they end with. So there's population in and out throughout the school year, but say, for example, over a four-year period, there really was no difference between what they started with and what they ended with. So in other words, if they started with six hundred, they ended with six hundred. But in between there, there are times that they may have been up to six twenty, and so that's the kind of fluctuation that was going on. But to give you an idea, you know, there's going to be a give or take on these numbers to a certain extent, but the Craig number here, essentially Craig could reduce from somewhere between sixty-five to eighty students. McKelvey would reduce anywhere from ninety to a hundred students under this scenario. River Bend would pick up about a hundred and eighty students on this, and Ross, I'm going to, Ross is probably the biggest shift right now there. It says they would lose twenty students, but really their current enrollment as of today was four thirty-six, so it's identical to what it would be. So that's how much they've changed from the start of this school year. So. Okay, this chart that's in front of you, it's a little difficult to read the numbers, unless my eyes are getting tired and they're just fuzzy, but it looks fuzzy to me up there. Everybody else is a clear four?
We are here, too.
Yeah, that must be it. Still the good-looking bald guy in the front, right, Chris? Unless you're sitting next to me.
Yeah, let's not confuse him.
Sorry, Sam. So what you have is a comparison chart of the three different scenarios we met, and the bottom line is, when we went through the decision matrix with the group, you know, the scenario three tended to place the schools close to or within their desirable enrollment range. It felt that scenario three was the best scenario to balance the enrollments with schools of comparable sizes. It was also more sustainable over time, and it didn't split the subdivisions or neighborhoods. So it really tried to maintain the integrity of the Board guidelines, and so I think that's what I could summarize from the Connections Task Force, that in the final matrix results you saw, they felt like that really maintained the integrity of our Board goals, and what the charge of the Board was to fix it, and also supported the Board guidelines both. So if you look down on the numbers again, and I don't know if you have your PowerPoint pulled up in front of you on your screen or not, but that might be helpful. But the numbers up there, in the last column, in this scenario, about a hundred and eighty students moved from north to central, and those are elementary students in this. The total number of elementaries moved within the whole scenario, because some of them, remember, stayed within the north area, moving from Craig to Ross, was about two hundred and fifty students were impacted as far as the elementary goals. On there, I have an asterisk by the middle school and the high school, potential, I'll get into that in just a second, I call as potential moves right now, because of the possibility of grandfathering implementation, that it wouldn't happen immediately for these students, and the numbers we use there. But if you look at the middle school students, you have about, close to a hundred middle school students that could potentially move from northeast middle to central middle. And as far as the high school goes, you're probably going to be in the range of one thirty to one forty for the potential of high school moves, so from North High to Central High. As far as the implementation goes, and this is part of the potential moves, we really based this on some of the feedback, the survey feedback we received from the community, but we wanted to make sure that fifth grade was granted an automatic special assignment for one year only. So in other words, if I'm a fourth grader at McKelvey, I get to stay at McKelvey for my fifth grade year if the parents choose to. But with the special assignment, and this will apply to all the special assignments over this, the same provisions about transportation would be in place, so a special assignment, as you all know, the parents provide transportation, so. The next one, going into the middle and high school, we'd have sixth through twelfth grade granted automatic special assignments as well, and then current students who were receiving special assignments would be honored as well. And that, just a reminder, that was a Board guideline, too, to try to honor students who are currently enrolled in the school. But again, all those special assignments, we wouldn't, there wouldn't be any transportation from the district provided, as the special assignment process calls for people to provide open for special circumstances, special programs, and also the possibility of siblings, we might have other cases to consider, and we'd have to look at what space availability is there, and really use kind of our general special assignment process as well. We're going to make sure rooms available and the right programs and resources are there. As far as voluntary student transfers, we were not going to look at any new enrollments for those schools, for Craig, McKelvey, Ross, and River Bend. So the schools that were impacted by this change, again, Craig, McKelvey, Ross, River Bend, the elementary level, we would not be accepting new enrollments. Okay, still continuing with the same timeline board, September, October, starting next Monday, we wanted to hold our first community meeting at the schools, so we'd start with Craig, and then go to McKelvey the next evening, Ross on October 4th, and then River Bend the following week. And after those meetings in November, the next board meeting, we couldn't bring it back suit, quickly enough, because our board meeting turnaround time is pretty quick, as our board meeting, I think, is October 5th. So we wanted to make sure that we had time, if there was any new information we needed to consider, would give us time to do that and bring it back for board to vote on the proposed attendance and boundary changes in November. And January, March certainly start transition opportunities, but we really want to get the word out very quickly, and actually, we've been meeting with the principals to be thinking about and start planning, and they have some ideas for some transition activities already. Some things are already built into getting ready for a new school year, where, where folks can come up and visit, or enrollment opportunities, but we'll have special events planned during any transition time. And then finally, this would be implemented in August of 2012. At this point, any questions or anything you'd like to clarify or review?
Mr. Major, we'll start with you.
I guess just a procedural point, we, since we've got the guidelines weighted now with good data, do you think we should amend our guidelines to enshrine that weighting?
I think, I think we'd be cautious about that at this point, because it was just the communities that were going to be impacted. We didn't do the entire Parkway community. So it was just from the north and central areas, so I think we'd need to consider what the other ones do, and we'd have to do it cautiously, because as soon as people, you know, we did this on the premise of change is coming, and so we need your input. And so how we do that with central west, or west-south area, we, we would proceed with caution as to not strike panic in anyone's heart.
Good point, thank you.
Concerning communication, how is this going to be communicated to Parkway community?
Well, it's one of the best things, I think, immediately, we wanted to send an update of tonight's presentation, or some type of E Street communication out to the public. And also, we will have a website up immediately tomorrow, I think, maybe even early as today. I don't know if Paul's going to be around.
It's ready to go. It's ready to go.
So we're, we're, we're ready to move on that immediately, and then our public meetings start next week. So those two things, we have a frequently asked questions flyer that was being handed out tonight, and some of the maps are ready up, and so the website will be very informative. It'll talk about our process along the way. It'll also contain links to all these board updates and the, of the process along the way. So every report that, that you have been given, and every PowerPoint that you have seen will be out there for public display as well, and also the upcoming timelines, and then a link to a current map that would, you could go onto like Google Maps, it would have an overlay that people could get into and see exactly where their home lies and according to the boundaries. So we, communication will start now.
Okay. Has the, the meetings with the different schools for the attendance and boundary areas, have those been publicly published, like in the post or something, so that parents are aware that these meetings are taking place?
I don't know if it's been in the post, but as far as public, I know all the principals have had them in the newsletters, and we have sent them out and posted them on our website as well. So inside of Parkway, there's certainly been a lot of communication, and I know at PTO meetings, they've been announced, and matter of fact, so much so that like Lisa Luna from Ross said, that we can anticipate a nice-sized crowd at the first one, because her parent community has already told, they're not waiting until the, it comes to their school on October 4th, they're going to Craig. So I think we can anticipate, and some folks might go to every one of them, so.
Thank you.
And I like that we're holding them pretty much a month before we vote, because then if we see the need to hold additional ones, we can always add some more. I don't know how to phrase this, so bear with me, but I, I see, you know, we're pulling out Old Farm Estates from Ross, which is probably the, the highest-priced homes in that area I would, within Ross. Has anyone thought about that? I mean, I, I know logically, and it makes sense logistically.
Yeah, I think geographically and numbers-wise, it, it was the, the best choice that the committee could make.
But we are pulling out those kids not only away from Ross, but away from north high, or north area.
That's correct. They would move through the central tennis area. There was a lot of discussion about that. So was, it wasn't dismissed, and it was brought up probably at every single time we met.
Was it?
Yeah. So a lot of consideration, but I think ultimately, do we, we want to provide the best education in every school for every kid, and we need to be committed to do that, and.
Well, and it makes sense if you look at the map. I mean, we wouldn't want it to stick out there by itself, that is kind of what I, where the area I live in is like that, so I, we don't want to do that.
Yeah, it would have been, it was, and when we even, even in consideration, it was, well, then where would you go? And it was just kind of, you know how we had all the neighborhood planning? Then it was kind of randomly picking, there, there was really no logical way to proceed from that.
Right.
You were just picking pockets of planning units.
Well, and the last go-around at this, that was a neighborhood in question the last time, so.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think that, I mean, it makes sense, just primary location. And in this case, we're, I, you know, I talk about how lucky we were, in a sense, to have River Bend not being used to its capacity, because that would have been a whole different issue. I mean, that would have probably been a domino in a district-wide effect, but we were able to isolate because we had room in that school.
If it had been closed, it was in '02 or whatever, I don't remember what year it was, the last time we looked at it.
Well, we probably would have been reopening another site.
Yeah. Interesting.
Other questions or discussion?
I have a quick question.
Yes, please.
This has to do with communication. I, I've heard from several parents, and I'm sure everybody else has too, there's a lot of confusion in the west and south areas, and the part of the central area that's not the River Bend area, that people are concerned that Highcroft is going to move to west, and a lot of stuff's going to happen in south, and I think we need to make a better effort to communicate to those folks which four schools this will affect.
Okay.
At this time, and none of that other stuff is under consideration, and people are really upset about it, and rumors are running rampant, so I think we really need to put that word out there.
If we could do it before homecoming, because we're going to get slaughtered.
We'll be, we'll be in good shape. With the, with the, the email message that'll go out, it's very clear, and one of the first questions on the frequently asked, it, it directly states the schools that are impacted by it.
Oh, what percentage of our households have email, or what percentage don't? I guess I should, would be a better question.
Say that again.
When we send an email out, what percentage of our families are not receiving?
I'm going to defer, if Paul's available.
Paul? What percentage of our families don't have email? Don't receive our news on email?
Well, I don't know about the last question. I know that when we surveyed, did a phone survey of all of our parents.
About 5%.
It was only about 5% of our resident families who did not.
If I may suggest, in the elementary school newsletters, if a piece of paper could go in that, it, to back up what your email says, or to just repeat what your email says, I think you'll have a better chance of hitting more parents that way.
And I think we have issues with the frequently asked question going out to the schools. I know we printed those up. Okay.
Thank you.
And just because we sent them an email doesn't mean.
They read it, right?
That's true.
We all know about that.
You know, the system we use, or that is being used for school cancellations, we get text messages. It, it, I, I'm familiar with School Reach, where you could, you know, get on the phone, and you could make an announcement, and basically it goes to all the.
Yeah, I think we're just using the alert now through the email process for this, is that what the plan is?
Does that allow the same, to, to basically communicate through that system?
Yes. Our system is, we used to have School Reach, and now we have a different vendor, but same thing. And on the communications for the start and end times, it's kind of a tiering of when you use the phone versus when you use the email versus both. And we try to not use the phone unless we really.
Right.
So our plan was, in fact, Dr. Marty's already recorded a message, that in the morning, Diana just loaded it in, at 10 o'clock, a, a phone call and an email will go to all families in the district about the start and end time, of start and end times. And then after that would be a separate email on the boundaries to all north-area families, as well as, we were going to do central, or River Bend, Central Middle, Central High, but based on what you just said, we could send it to all the central, all the central elementaries if. And it, and it has, in the FAQ in there, it states, all central, people currently attending central area schools would remain at their current school of assignment, but.
Bold and underlined, please.
I don't know where that's come from, because it's not been any conversation.
I don't know either, but you know, all it takes is one person, and they tell their neighbor, and then.
But we could, the only thing we could do is we could also do a phone call on the boundaries to all those families as well. It's just one more phone call, so I don't, that's, I don't know. But I think the flyer idea, sending the flyer home, I think it's a great idea. We'd do that.
Since we're talking about communication, we'll just clarify, too, that we have, we divided up for this week, Bonnie, Desi, Paul, myself, and visit all those elementary school staffs. So they're updated, so the staffs all had an opportunity to hear this. Desi spent time today with all the principals, so all the principals of district know the plan. So I, you know, I, there's always room for more communication, but I think we, we've really worked hard, in fact, I'm getting kind of tired of Desi's presentation, but.
It gets better each time, doesn't it, Dr. Moore?
Diana is sending an E Street tonight with all this information to all staffs, so that they would have a, a little bit ahead of the parent.
So that brought up something. After this year, I assume we're going to look at other places? Other issues, or do we not have?
Well, I think it's something we should monitor all the time as part of Goal Six. I mean, as, if we talk about resource allocation and fiscal responsibility, and we do have a process that allows us to, to at least, I mean, we, I, I'll speak for myself, I have a better understanding of a process that will take us through change if necessary, but I think it just should be an ongoing part of what we do.
And maybe in this communication, to especially to those other areas that have concerns, we say something like that, something.
I think the difference is, this was kind of an immediate, you know, we needed to do this, and, and that might be a question, why aren't other areas impacted? Well, there's not necessarily an overcrowding at those schools, so. And I, and I think that's addressed in the frequently asked question as well.
Good. Never mind.
I do think you're, you're on to something, though. I, I think that, you know, this is for long-term discussion, but strategically, we should not get to a point where, you know, we have these inequities. So I think there ought to be policy or procedures where every so many years, we automatically just review that, those numbers. And you're right, we have, we have the, Versatronic has the neighborhoods, you know, and that, that would have to be updated, but it's really much, we can use the technology much better and, and have much better information.
Yeah. I would imagine that through the facilities planning process, too, that, that's going to come up, as far as we're looking at the resources and how we're using our facilities.
I mean, if you could somehow tap into demographic data, so you don't really, this stuff doesn't sneak up on you.
Just, you want to just?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Probably 15 years ago, the board had very nice demographic data that said, closed Robin Hill, and so.
You could ask Dr. Soriano, he was there.
Yeah, you really do have to be careful with that. I, I'm just, as, as, you know, in 2002, I remember talking about north being under, in three to four years, being under 1,200 students, and that never happened, in fact, just the opposite happened, so.
Desi, maybe just a real quick, how these meetings are going to be conducted at this to schools? Just real quick.
Yeah, when we come to the school, that we'll get a, I think we'll open things up with, with a presentation of this sort, so people have a clear understanding of what's being proposed. But also, as they come in, I don't know if you had an opportunity to see the maps on display, but we want to have it kind of like a, I don't know if anybody attended the MoDOT meetings when the highways were being changed, where there would be kind of stations where you could go, see the maps, talk to people, have some immediate feedback and one-on-one conversations. So we want to kind of do a little bit of a hybrid meeting, where yes, you're going to get a, a brief presentation, an explanation of process and what the proposal is, but then there'll also be a time for you to get up close and personal with the administrator, and we're going to have the, the elementary administrators, as long with the secondary administrators at the meeting there as well, too. So a couple different setups for the format, but, yeah, Beth?
Is there a, a role for board members at those four meetings?
We didn't have a role designated for the format, of course, you're always welcome, and we could.
I think we kind of said that if you wanted to go, you could, but it would be more as an observer. Let the, let the people there be the, the ones to give the party line.
Yeah, well, people like Desi and myself, Bonnie, and, you know, we're going to make ourselves available, those people have specific questions, and I guess if you'd show up, you might be part of that, in essence, they'll recognize you. But we're really going to be a resource, and again, it, kind of roaming around and, and price their people to places where they can also get information. The principals are going to be there of the, of the receiving schools, as well as our middle and high school principals, well, as well.
Are, are, are you making any special effort to meet with PTO presidents, these specific schools?
Well, we met with the PTO presidents, Chris and I.
The big group, but I'm talking about these four specific, maybe six, maybe the four middle, elementary schools, and the middle school, and the high school, the people that are involved. I don't know. I, you know, we, we just saw tonight how PTO president can get information out to a lot of people, and I think if we have those PTO presidents, you know, unders, have, have a great understanding of what we're trying to do, and what kind of impact it's going to have on the schools, they could be our allies.
It's my understanding, they've been pretty involved with the principals in setting this up, I think, is what an impression I've.
And I don't know that they'll, they'll get, as far as pushing out information, I don't know that they'll have anything beyond what we're going to push out immediately.
Right.
If that makes sense, so.
But if they have questions, I mean, after these meetings, we'll certainly, I mean, if there's further questions or needs, I think they'll play a real important role in those transition opportunities we're talking about. Because once a decision is made, that's where they can really be helpful.
Yeah.
We start welcoming and have activities, and sometimes the parents really can be helped in, in, in some of their transition concerns by the PTO efforts.
We're going to want you to get them involved.
Yes.
Great. Any more questions or comments for? Desi, we thank you, you've been working, I've, I've got a picture of you in your office working on this, you've got the map up on there.
This documentation.
You were so involved, you didn't even see me take the picture. But thank you very much, we appreciate the work that everybody's putting in on this, and we're, we're feeling that if we make the right communication and do things right, that we should see that the, you know, a smooth transition.
And, and just to comment on that, you're right, there are a lot of people put a lot of time into this and those meetings, and so it was done very collaboratively, and a lot of thought, a lot of conversation, but in the end, I feel very confident that we've, we've given many, many things up for consideration, and I think one thing was comforting as we went to the schools to hear the faculty concerns as we presented to principals today, there weren't big surprises. There were, there, you know, things that were brought up by a lot of thoughtful people had been considered, talked about, and discussed throughout this process, so I think we're in a good place, and, you know, our mission does reference an ever-changing world, and we're, we're experiencing some of that today.
Thank you very much, Desi, and to all the rest of you, too. 14.0 policy review, there is none. 15.0, call for a special meeting, none. 16.0, call for executive session. May I ask for a motion in a second that the Board of Education call for an executive session, including any record or vote, on Wednesday, October 5th, at 6:30 PM?
No hearing.
That's not going to happen. And/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School, for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district, and any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys. 610 dot O21 dot one. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employees discussed or recorded. 610 dot O21 dot three. Item three. Item 3, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. 610.021.13. Thank you, roll call, Ms. Calanda.
Mr. Applehorn?
Yes.
Do you?
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Major? Mrs. Mogerman? Dr. Sortino? Mr. Jacob?
Yes. 17.0, we've done that. 18.0, closed meeting. 19.0, may I ask for a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you, everyone.